My name is Kent Larson with DLR Group, Architecture, out of Portland, Oregon. So we're teamed up with Garth and his team to work through the concept planning work for you.
Jake Davis, I'm also a principal with DLR Group. I lead our national practice for public safety facilities and did all the programming and led the planning effort for the project.
Tim Gany with DLR Group as well. I lead the design portion of our firm.
And when you're talking now, you can move those microphones back and forth. They're not flooded. All right, Alan.
Good evening. Alan Danen, Public Works Engineering.
Steve Powers, City Manager.
Casey Duncan, Deputy City Manager.
I'm Jerry Moore. I'm the Chief of Police in Salem.
I'm Warren Bonars, City Council Board Seven, and I wanted to read into the record a statement, if I can at this point. I want to declare that potential conflict of interest because of one of the options being discussed is that a proposed police facility is owned by members of my family. The property I'm referring to is located immediately to the south of the labyrinth is known as the Commercial Leslie Site. I do not personally own that property. As we are not at the point of the decision-making, I was advised by the State Board of Ethics that this is only a potential conflict.
Thank you.
I'm Tom Anderson. I'm the City Councilor for Ward Two.
Great, and you know that I'm Anna Peterson, Salem Mayor, and?
In the mic.
Chuck Bennett, Ward, City Councilor, Ward One.
Good evening. Jim Lewis, City Councilor, Ward Eight.
Hi. Steve McCoy, City Councilor, Ward Four.
Thank you very much, everybody. So I wanted a motion for approval of the agenda as you see this revised agenda in front of you. Council Bennett?
So moved.
Yeah, all right. Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? All right, motion carries. So this is the beginning of our work session and in discussing with you the objectives for tonight. The purpose of the work session is to provide a detailed update on the work and the recommendations of the council subcommittee regarding the police facility's size and the best sites, given siting standards that have been developed by the International Association of Chiefs of Police. The city hired an architect with expertise in police facility siting and design, consistent with the council's direction and as recommended by the Blue Ribbon Task Force, to confirm the space needed by police for the next 30 years, developing siting criteria and assess potential sites to determine whether the new facility would be appropriate. The council charged the subcommittee with moving the police facility forward. We followed the process outlined and we benefited from the robust and detailed analysis on the space need and potential sites. We are where we intended to be with well-defined goals for the new facility and a siting decision before us, and I feel confident that we're on the right track and we're on the right timeline. Tonight, we'll check in with the council to confirm the recommendations from the subcommittee regarding the size and regarding the preferred site or sites. To carry forward to the next phase we laid out in the beginning, that we laid out in the beginning, the cost estimating and developing a more conceptual design. We'll end our discussion tonight with a decision about how we wish to receive the information within the next three weeks, and I'd like to take a moment to extend our appreciation to our Chief of Police, Jerry Moore, and to one of our engineers, Alan Danen. Both of you have done a tremendous job managing this effort and keeping us on target and on task. And just before I turn it over to Alan, I want to draw your attention to the fact that in the council report that I presented almost two weeks ago, there was also a press release that was attached and some other documents. And of course, if you had a chance to look at those, and I assume you did because you needed that for the, just to kind of bring you up to speed for tonight, we've laid out all the way along that the process would include time for the subcommittee to do the work that the council charged them to do, time for the council to review information and receive that information, review that information, and deliberate, come to decisions, do more fact-finding, whatever it was that we needed to do, that there would be a public hearing held. That's been on so many of the documents that we've been dealing with and looking at, and that the ultimate thing we will need to do going forward will be to go out for a bond measure, and that will be a decision that the council will make. We have not made that decision yet, but I want to be clear that that will be part of the process that we move forward with. Now, I'm the one, sorry, so I'll do the best I can, but you may not capture it all on here. Okay, thanks. But, so I just wanted to kind of go over those steps again with you so that everybody would understand and everybody would know that we're doing exactly what we always said we would do and we will do what we said we will do. We will deliberate as appropriate here. We will make decisions as appropriate in the council meetings, and we will conduct a public hearing as we always said we would. So I just want to be clear that there's no question, there's never been any question about that. There's never been any question about how this process is going to move forward. So I just want to be certain that, you know, just kind of want to restate that for everybody's clear understanding. So with that, Alan, I would ask you to take over and kind of recap where we are with our police facility's subcommittee recommendations and help us to go on to the next step for tonight.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So our group of consultants will do the bulk of the work tonight, but just to set the stage, they've been working very hard since our last subcommittee meeting just before the holidays and then our site tour just after the New Year, pulling together information on the top four sites that have been identified and all of that to kind of stay on the schedule that we identified with the subcommittee to get a work session done in January, move on to next steps for decision-making, all with the end goal of a November 2016 election in mind. So that's the push for their hard work, and they've been burning the midnight oil to get to this point, and they'll be ready to do that after tonight's work as well to move forward with the direction from the council. I think the only other thing I want to add is they're just going to briefly recap the work of the subcommittee, talk about program, talk about how we got to the top four sites, and then share with you what they've learned about those top four sites. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jake Davis.
Well, thank you, Alan, and, you know, I'm going to step up here. Thank you for having us here. Again, Jake Davis with DLR Group. I had the privilege and the opportunity to work with the subcommittee and with police staff to really do a deep dive on understanding what the needs are for the police department, both today and for the future. I've also had the opportunity to travel around the country, working on projects exactly like this, helping to build consensus and comparing information about the way that police departments do their business, how they operate. And in part of gaining that understanding here in Salem, whoops, we did kind of a deep dive, a deep dive to understand kind of how the facility operates. We met with 29 distinct groups within the police department over that time. I even attended a ride-along in the community and saw firsthand kind of how business is done within the police department. And then layering that against our sort of store of knowledge, my own store of knowledge, we assembled a program of spaces that need to be within the facility. We put together estimates for kind of growth of the department, understanding that police departments don't grow symmetrically. In other words, they don't grow evenly across their ranks. There are efforts that are made to grow certain aspects. You may add police officers that are patrol officers in sort of one group, and then work to develop a specialty unit on sort of another avenue. So, understanding that, we came up with a program, and what we also did was we looked at sort of comparables to try to understand where the Salem Police Department, the City of Salem, fit into the sort of the matrix of things relative to the number of sworn officers that the police department has and relative to sort of population. So one of the things that we did was to look at similar cities. What's unique about Salem? What puts Salem in sort of a context across the United States? And one of the things is it's a capital city of the state that it's in. It has a population of just a little bit under 200,000, and so we looked at some similar state capitals, looking at Salt Lake City and Des Moines and Baton Rouge and so forth, and sort of layering against that, and it sort of gave a background for the Salem Police Department being sort of in the, by those comparables, kind of lower in terms of staff and staff per thousand officers, and I think that provides a good backdrop for the space need that we found. Whoops, I didn't go the right direction. We also looked at some regional comparables, looking at other facilities and communities that are within the Northwest region here, and looking at cities like Eugene and Medford. Medford is in the process of building a new police station. I think what, again, what we start to see here is that Salem sits at the current staffing, sits at the lower end or the mid-range of this comparable. Looking out toward 2045, 30 years in the future, at a population of 210,000 and a growth rate, and we'll talk a little bit about this later, of about 260 sworn officers, brings it up to about 1.23 per thousand, but looking at cities like Nampa and Medford and so forth still ranks sort of below them, and I think that this is just valuable to understand kind of where Salem sits in sort of the context of other police departments. Then we looked at square feet per sworn officer. This is a benchmark that's used in looking at police facilities, and the IACP, the International Association of Chiefs of Police, has developed some criteria or sort of a shorthand for what is kind of average, 400 to 800 square feet per sworn officer creates sort of a benchmark to shoot from. In some facilities, depending on the scale of them, this Salem Police Department, and to put this into perspective, is a fairly large police department, a pretty sophisticated police department as well, and again, I've spent a tremendous amount of time getting to know this police department at a pretty intimate level. A lot of service offerings, a lot of service offerings that certainly could be enhanced at different points. What's interesting here to look at this, at some of the surrounding communities, Kaiser obviously nearby just built a new police facility, a much smaller police facility, but what's interesting is that on a square foot per sworn officer, and I mentioned that smaller police facilities tend to be on the higher end of this range, but puts it up near the top of that square feet per sworn range. What's interesting is that even the proposed police station at close to 150,000 square feet is really at the lower end of that range, but that's pretty consistent with a larger police facility. Current square foot per sworn is well below that range, about 28,000 square feet on the lower level of Civic Center puts it into some perspective. So sort of giving a little bit of a roundup about the program, we built this organically. We didn't come in with any sort of set assumptions, but there's a lot of detail that goes into this, and, you know, putting together this program and looking actually, not expecting people to necessarily see this, but looking at past programs that were done and going into a great deal of detail as far as each department and forecasting growth within each department. We laid out a staffing comparable and a square foot total, and so it falls into the basic sort of blocks of the police department from administration through support, investigations, patrol, the Willamette Valley Communications Center, and then things that are sort of staff-wide support and facilities. And what we do is we put actually a grossing factor, a departmental and building grossing factor, to account for spaces between workstations as well as stairs and elevators and wall thicknesses and so forth, to get to a total square foot recommendation. And the recommendation that we've made and that the subcommittee put forward was essentially to come to a new police facility all-in that was just below 150,000 square feet in area. Looking at that, you know, I think we're appreciative of the fact that that's a very large number. It's a larger number than what was seen before, but it's a number that we feel very confident with based on the fact that I think there was a good deal of preamble and effort that went into assembling this. But understanding that that's the case and understanding that cost estimates are still to come for these various scenarios, there are areas of the program that if the council was interested in reducing the program, there are areas to look at. One of the things that's on here is talking about adjusting the growth assumptions. At 2.4 officers a year average across the 30-year timeline, which is a growth of about 73 sworn officers in that time, and there's a consequent growth of civilians through that period of time. One of the real tricks here is that, you know, you're talking about a civic facility that you're building for all times. You're building for a long period of time. It's going to be an owner-occupied facility for a period of 30 or more years, and there's a significant investment of capital that goes into that. There's a significant impact of collective intellect that goes into that, and making sure that you plan for some level of growth, I think, is vitally important. And so we built a level of growth into this, and what's interesting about it is that at that growth rate, it equates to about 8,000 net square feet of space and maybe about 12,000 gross square feet, you know, sort of across the building, which is a fairly small impact relative to the overall program, but a very valuable kind of step forward in terms of investing in the future. Also understanding that as technology advances, things change. The advent of body cameras just over the last few years within police departments has been, had a major impact. Specialty units as they crop up, I've spent some time with the domestic violence unit of the Salem Police Department, and even at that level, they carry a specialty camera, for example, to do their jobs. So as equipment grows, there's a little bit of an inverse paradox as far as space has to be allotted for those things, and I think flexibility has to be put in place. So we would definitely recommend that the council consider keeping a modest plan for growth in the facility. There are elements within the facility that are not intrinsically directly related to the police department. The communications center, the WVCC, is an area that is included in the plan, the program for the facility, but looking at elements like that would be a way of looking at wholesale kind of reductions in the space. We would not recommend a unilateral reduction of space, but maybe an adjustment of growth could be considered. So just some food for thought relative to moving forward with this recommendation. Go ahead.
Go ahead. But actually, if we wait, why don't we wait till the end? Let him do the presentation, and then we'll be moving on to discussion and questions. Okay.
Okay. So against that backdrop, we also were tasked, as the mayor pointed out, to do a site selection. And in order to select sites for the site for the project, we established a set of criteria, and this set of criteria was based on some guidelines that were set out by the International Association of Chiefs of Police. And as we put those together, I think Garth is going to talk a little bit about the process that we used.
Yes, to further take the IACP standards, we really looked at all of that criteria. There are really 22 total criteria of those standards, and they really allow you to take a holistic view in a somewhat subjective process of sites, which are all unique in characteristics, impact, context, and so forth. So from that, what we did is we took that criteria and then we further boiled that down into 11 criteria in which to evaluate the different sites. Each of those criteria then were really looked at, and the main criteria that really came out of those 11 characteristics were location, cost, and site suitability. And so with that in mind, we took that then further and came up with an evaluation, more or less a scoring system, in which to look at the different sites, apples-to-apples comparisons. And so when we went through the subcommittee process, we allowed those rankings to be considered through the subcommittee and really looking at a priority. What are the most important of those 11 criteria? And of those 11 criteria, the three overriding, top three, were central location, the second being property acquisition and development cost, and the third, most important, service to the city. And so those three, again, those three overriding characteristics, location, cost, site suitability. We then went further and now got into the real legwork of looking at particular sites within the community. And so when we did that process, we looked at sites that were given to us from council direction, from past discussions, from the City of Salem Urban Development site search within the staff and available information that they had on sites, the local real estate professional input on sites that could work for this purpose and might be available, and then this council subcommittee input as we went through that criteria. So of those 30 sites that were considered, we then looked at that and based upon a cursory review using the site location and main criteria of those IACP standards and how this could possibly fit on the site, and the relative cost of those, we then reduced those 30 potential sites, which are shown on the map here, to eight in which to evaluate. I think the important thing at this point, I think, is to really look at this graphically. And if you really look at our community and you're looking at the 30 sites and you notice the different distances that qualify from the existing City Hall central location, you start to really see how distant some of the sites become. And so when we looked at the sites of the 30 sites that were considered, of the eight sites then that made the final cut, those sites included the Windows to the West property, which is to the west side of City Hall campus, the Mission and Commercial property on Leslie Street just south of the parking structure, the church and Union site, which is also known as the Department of Energy property in downtown Salem, the Commercial and Division property, also known as the former O'Brien Auto Dealership site, the Downtown Storage site, which is on High Street, Liberty High Broadway location, and then the final three, as you'll notice here, were all in the two-to-three-mile, more distant locations. Those three being the 25th Street site across from the airport, the Fairview Industrial site in the Fairview Industrial Park, and then also the Portland Road site, also known as the Epping property. And so when we took, we looked at those eight sites, we used that criteria, then we came up with four top sites that really, really more or less rose to the surface from a scoring standpoint. If you'll notice, of the four that were considered here, of the original eight, the three distant ones didn't make the cut. The service to the city and central location really became qualifiers that scored those properties down. There were other considerations, of course, as well, but that was a very important characteristic, important criteria. And so of the four final sites that were looked at, one was the Windows to the West property, one was the Commercial and Leslie property, south of the library parking structure, another being, of course, the O'Brien Auto Dealership site, and then the Downtown Storage, the Liberty and High Street site downtown. So as we looked at those, we looked at those in more detail and had a ranking and pros and cons scoring system, and then from that, we further boiled those down, in which you're going to hear from DLR about the details of those sites, and specifically, the upshot is the two sites really have kind of come to the surface in this process as being both viable and comparable from a feasibility standpoint. So with that in mind, I'll let Tim jump into the layout and the characteristics of how this police facility program could be incorporated on these sites.
So what you're going to see next is what we refer to as a site test fit, and so what that really means is to look at these sites at that next level of detail, taking the program that we have developed and really seeing what is the best, most efficient way we can lay the program out on these sites to make a functional police station. So in order to do that, we really need to look at, whoops, wrong way.
No, that's actually, that's actually the next thing. So in other words, the program that we already talked about, that's sort of the basis for sort of what we do. I think the other piece of that, if, Tim, if you go to the next one, is that there's a significant parking component that goes with a police station. I think it's important to understand that there really are three big tiers of parking that make up a police facility. You have some parking for the public, you know, people coming to file reports and the like. You have, you know, potentially a community room space on the site that would invite people to that. You have police vehicle parking, specialty parking, parking for the marked cars and so on, and then you have parking for the staff, the pretty significant staff that works in this building, about 338 staff today and over 400 in the future. So that adds up to a pretty significant parking requirement, and what we did is we put a growth factor on those things to sort of go along with the growth factor that's been put on the existing staff for the police department, and what that comes out to is a total of about 445 spaces that are required. And I do want to emphasize the fact that, you know, you sort of overlay the criteria of sort of centralized location and service to the city and cost considerations, and then you layer over 150,000 square foot facility, and the way that that needs to be layered and stacked and so forth, and that there are some critical adjacencies that work with that. And likewise with the parking, there are critical adjacencies, making sure that the police vehicles are secure and that they're together and that they're to some degree out of the weather, making sure that the public can have easy access to the building and that there's good wayfinding, you know, for that. So you start to layer all those things together. They drive a certain amount of solution, and I think you'll see that bubble out of these test fits that we did. I think you'll see that bubble out of these test, test fits, test fits that we did. Going, does this, oh. Then we looked at, at sort of blocking and stacking options, and these, these kind of helped inform what we did for the, for the site test fits, is that we looked at different ways of sort of stacking, layering the building. Some of these sites, as, as we'll discuss, have significant slope to them. So how do you deal with maybe what's high on one side of the site and low on the other, having maybe some walkout sort of areas? There are garages that are part of the program for the review of evidence vehicles and so forth. There's a Sally Port for bringing in people that are going to be questioned and so forth. There are requirements for administration and for investigations and so forth. So we looked at some of these different options. And what you'll see is that all of the sites have a multi-level option associated with them.
And most of that, if, yes.
I think I want to just stop for just a second with this information and all the information that's been given so far, and just check in with counselors and see if there are questions about any of the information that's been given so far, if there's anything that people feel like they'd like to have it repeated before we get too far down the trail.
Excellent.
So I would entertain if there are questions of any of the presenters or staff as far as the items that we've covered so far. The scope of the program, meaning the size of the police facility, you know that the council subcommittee recommended a, this size that we're looking at and considering tonight, and then the, the going forward on the criteria that we said we would look at, and then the, the facilities that we've ended up with. Are there any questions at this point? Coming along, Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, this is to go to Jake, not from State Farm. If you could go back to the slide that shows the existing square footage of the Salem facility.
The, the existing facility?
Or facilities.
Right. The, the.
One of the first slides.
Right. Actually, it's in, it's in that slide, Tim. No, the, the one.
Here's the, no, no, was that, was that last one?
Oh, no, no, you're, you're right.
Okay.
Here's the issue. We're using 48,000 square feet as a starting point, and I think that's a, that's a critical error. Currently, we house 48,000 square feet, but we don't have a viable police facility. We have a dysfunctional police facility. We have a, we have a situation that is one incident away from a major lawsuit. And so, for example, if we use that 48,000 square feet as our benchmark and we plan, let's say, for example, a 75,000 square feet, in a short amount of time, we are going to be planting ourselves into exactly the same situation we're in now. So I, I think what we should, and I have two questions. One, for our situation currently, what is the industry standard? Where, where should we be on a square footage standpoint from an industry standard? And secondly, in comparison with other cities, our size, where are they? And therefore, where should we be on a square footage size? So coming at the answer two different ways.
Right. I, I think, I think I'll start by saying that I completely agree with your comment that the 48,000 square feet is an aggregate of, of a number of different facilities, including the 28,000 square feet that are part of the Civic Center. That, that is, it is dysfunctional. It is, creates some, some difficulties in terms of where things are located. There's a crime lab that's considerably remote to the police facility that affords a good bit of running back and forth. You know, we tried to provide some ranges to show sort of where, where the Salem Police Department fits in sort of the context of, of other agencies of its type, other peer type of agencies. And I think what you'll find is that you're actually at a lower kind of sworn per thousand ratio than most of your colleagues out there. You know, from a police facility point of view, you know, if, if you stripped out the growth factors that are put in this program, you looked at current staff at 187 sworn, the recommendation there falls into the range, and if you excluded WVCC for the purposes of sort of comparing, because WVCC is currently off-site, you'd take out about 17,000 there and about 13,000 more for the sort of staff growth, so about 30,000 square feet out of the program. So looking at just today's need and on a sort of comparable basis, and for the purposes of maybe answering your question, I'll even take the crime lab out of the equation, which is about another 6,000 square feet. So if you were to take 36,000 square feet out of, out of the thing, the, the current need really is in the range of about 108,000 square feet. And that is, you know, comparable to a, and that's in a consolidated manner compared to a scattered group of, of facilities that make up 48,000 square feet. And that's something that we would find on a, on a base, on a national basis, to find that the need is about three times the, the current space is not, is not surprising. It's not unusual in any way, shape, or form. I would say that that tends to fall between three and four times on an average basis. In terms of cities of this, of this type, I think what ends up happening is that you fall into a, a little bit of an unusual spot in terms of the fact that even at 260 sworn, slightly, there's a kind of a colloquial level where at 300 or more sworn, you end up going to more of a distributed sort of setup of, of stations. In other words, going to precinct stations and so forth. At a centralized facility, I would say that 150,000 square feet is, is pushing the top end of that range. But it's, I think what keeps this fascinate, fascinating in a sense is that every one of these is sort of a little bit of a unique concoction. You know, a concoction of population, of, of the way that the police department is staffed, the kind of services that the police department offers. And so that's why we take a very analytical and a very detailed approach to, to putting this together, because there's not a one-size-fits-all sort of answer for it. I think this answer is very particularly tailored to Salem and the Salem Police Department. I have a high level of confidence about that. That's, that's the right number. Is it the right concoction of things? That's not for us to say, but it's to forecast the need, and I think that, that we've done that.
Okay.
Well, no. I was looking for a simple arithmetic number. But let me, let me say, what I'm hearing from you is that, all things being equal, we could be occupying as little as half of what other municipalities could be using right now, currently.
Right, on, on a, on a square foot per sworn basis, we're probably about half of what other facilities are.
So we, so in essence, what I'm hearing is that if we were somewhere else, we could be using 100,000 square feet going to 148,000 square feet, not 48,000 square feet going to 150,000 square feet. It's, it's where we are that's the issue. We are dysfunctional at 48,000 square feet. We're not just needing to grow.
I think, I, I would strongly agree with that statement.
All right, and War, Counselor Anderson, and then Counselor Nantke. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I'm curious, Mr. Davis, about six months ago, in a letter you wrote to the council, you said, gee, we think 75 isn't enough. It looks like 90,000 square feet would be a good number and maybe a little, a larger. And now you've gone from 90 or a little larger to 150. So I, I'd like to know how that came about, if you could, please.
Well, how it came about, how we got to 150 is that we did a detailed analysis to get to that point. As far as making that statement, certainly, you know, being asked sort of against a backdrop of work that had been done in the past, I think that it was reasonable to assume, based on sort of limited information, that the facility was going to be bigger than what that prior study had found. I can't, I can't account for the, the number, but I didn't feel like it was responsible at, at that point in time with a very limited amount of information to say, well, I think it's going to be twice that.
So it, it sounds like you're saying, when you drilled down, you came to the conclusion that it needed to be that big.
That's correct.
I'm interested in the three alternatives that were offered at the subcommittee meeting and then also, also offered here. And I think you've talked quite a bit about the removing some of the items that were there. You talked about the Communication Center and the Crime Lab. Then as I read it, I think the public facility is part of that, meaning meeting rooms, community rooms, that's about another 4,000 square feet?
Actually, I think it's, it's a little bit more. It's, it's combined in the public facilities line of the program, it's actually combined with the lobby and the lobby meeting rooms, community, or report-taking rooms, for example. The, the community room itself, I think, is probably about, right around there, around 4,000 square feet of program area.
And if the community room were omitted, would that reduce some other square footage someplace else?
I don't believe it would, it would, it would remove itself. That, that's, that's basically it.
Then I think that, we had a little conversation before, and, and, you know, I, I looked at the figures, the historical figures, it shows that since 1972, we've gained 1.8 officer per year as opposed to 2.4, which is projected out to the future. And then I did some fundamental math, if I can remember it, you know, X over Y equals something over something and multiply back and forth this way. And so it came to me that that was about a 7% reduction in officers. If you look at that over the frame, it went from, I wrote it down here someplace, it went from about, it was about an 18 officer reduction, I think, over that, that period.
18 out of the 73 that were.
And, and then I reduced what I thought were the things that were located with the officers, certain of the stuff that's on your, if you could go to the one that shows the, the actual square, yes, that one. No, that one, thanks, Tim. So I reduced support investigation patrol by 7%.
Sure.
And then I reduced non-divisional by 7%. And I came up with about 7.8 additional 1,000 square feet. And then in our discussion, you said it was about eight. And so I presume we could also, if, if the officer growth were reduced, there'd be another 8,000 square feet that might be out of that.
Right, well, in, in other words, that there's, there's a median sort of point, in other words, to say that we're not going to cut all growth out of the building, but that we could make a, derate the, the rate essentially.
So I'm down to 96,000 square feet if we take out the public facilities and reduce the number of officers. I'm not saying that's the correct number, but.
That sounds low to me, based, based on that. I think you'd have to take something, something more than that to, to get to that point. But I mean, in, in, in spirit, I think that's.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, that's an option that's, that's interesting to me. I guess, and this is kind of a follow-up on Counselor Lewis's question, when he was asking you to compare to other cities. And I don't know how to ask this except to just ask it. When you come to other cities and you say, this is what we recommend, do the other cities say, great, let's do it? Or do they start to whittle down too as, as the, the cost and the, the unique circumstances street city might dictate?
You know, this, I would say the answer to that question is, is sort of a highly speculative and sort of colloquial kind of answer, but I would say that almost everybody looks at this critically to some degree.
And then final, one more question, Mayor, if I may. It seems like at one point you were talking about it was important to have 60,000 square feet on the ground, but when you're, and maybe I'm ahead of the self, myself here because we're talking about the buildup. I would presume that the smaller the footprint on the ground of the building, the more parking you have on the surface and the less you need to build up the parking.
Yeah, if we think back to one of the leading candidates of selecting the sites, it was centrality. And as we all know, almost all the central sites are, are smaller. And that comes down to density and good urban planning. So those sites are, are smaller, which means the actual buildable area or the size of the site is, limits you in terms of what you could put on that ground level. And with parking and spaces, the space needed to provide a functional police station with squad vehicles, et cetera, combined with the building footprint, with, with the right programs on the ground, like you mentioned, the community room, that, that wants to be on the ground level. There's other entities and program that wants to be on the ground level. And so by doing so, you quickly lose the, the, the actual buildable area really quick. And so.
It's on the smaller sites.
Correct, correct. Now, if you were building this out, way out in the suburbs.
Let's just look at the four sites we've got.
Right, right. And that was, that was the big, that was a, a, a big driver for the, for the sites. And actually, density in police stations is, is a good thing. I mean, it's, it doesn't make a challenge. It's, it's actually, moving up and down in the building is, is very efficient. And they're also, they're, they're not more expensive. That's, it's, a lot of people think that they are, and that's.
And in that situation, the parking would be less expensive if you build up, now I'm speaking of the larger, the larger site parcels.
Right, that, that parking can get expensive actually when you do structured parking. And in the schemes that we've done, we've really thought about this in terms of value. We, we believe in value-added design. And so we've thought about the parking in a very efficient way, and we'll get to that in a second. But we're, we, in, in all the schemes, we never went above two levels of parking. And where we did, it was sort of, that was where we found the flaw in some of these sites, and, and we can get that, to that later in the meeting.
Just, this very quick question.
Go ahead.
Now, if you build these, I almost said if you build them, they will come, but that's not, yeah, that's better than Jake from State Farm. If, if you build something, I presume at some point you could build something that has the capacity at a later date to add more storage, or add more stories, I, I would mean. You could build it at a certain number of square feet and then at maybe three or four floors, and then at some later point, if it's found that needed, you could add a floor or two on top of that?
I would say anything is possible. We, we have, we as architects have talked about that before as a potential for growth. It's, it's very, very, very rarely done because it's, it becomes cost prohibitive. I've, I've been doing this over 20 years, and I've designed footings and, and structure and columns to handle those additional floors. But in all those buildings, it's never happened. But it is possible.
Counselor, I'd even go one step further and say that, you know, I made a statement sort of in the open that was about the nonlinear growth of, of police facilities, and I think that it makes mass-scale additions to those facilities challenging. And the areas that could benefit from a future addition, like evidence, for example, is something that by its function tends to want to be located on the ground floor.
All right, Counselor Nan. Oh, I'm sorry, the Chief, Chief Moore has a, an observation or question.
I just wanted to respond to a couple of the questions.
Good, okay.
And I, I believe Jake's growth was included over a 30-year period, and I think that was at 2.3 officers or 2.4. And if you look at the history of this facility and where we were 42 years ago and where we are today, the actual growth factor over that 40-year period, I believe, was about 1.8 officers, which is exactly the same as I think what we would be looking at. So I, it's, it's important we compare apples to apples. So instead of, we've been in this one for 42 years. I appreciate the fact that we think we might be in this one for 30. I won't be there, but I will guarantee you, or would almost guarantee you, that whatever we build, this police department's going to be in it for 40 years or so, would be my guess. And then the other, I, this isn't a, this is just a comment regarding a community room. And there's been a lot of discussion over the course of the last two years about whether you need a community room. There's a discussion that you can go meet somewhere else or you can rent out space. I will tell you, talking with chiefs all over the country, that a community room where people that. I will tell you, talking with chiefs all over the country, that a community room where people that live in this community can come meet with their police department, inside a police department, is a huge factor in building relationships. And if you look at what's going on around this world, relationships and our ability to connect with our community is huge. And I think that community room plays a big part in that.
Good, all right, thank you. Counselor Nankey?
Well, that's, I hardly have to say anything, because I was going to actually, on the upfront, ask about the officers per thousand escalation rate throughout history as well, based on the 2.39 or whatever versus the 1.8, and then in regards to the community room. And that could be dependent on exactly what site we choose as well. And what, you know, if it was one that's right next to City Hall, we have the Anderson Room, we have now the vacated space there that might free up some extra community space. So I'll wait and see kind of where we end up on that. But the, the big one was the per thousand, and then how will we go forward based on the ultimate size? To make that determination on, on what we actually want for square footage.
Okay. I'm not sure which of you was first, Counselor Bennett and then Counselor McCoy.
I think I was.
Oh, I'm sorry, Warren. All right, Counselor Benars.
I want to follow up with, with Counselor. Anderson had talked about, he mentioned going upward, can you build it that way? And the other side of this is, knowing the site, the acreage that we're picking up, what about going, spreading sideways? Can we add on to the building, have an addition to it? So you're not having to structurally do anything to it, but you're saying, I can add another whatever square feet down the road in 20, 30 years when you really need it? Not where you don't need it necessarily today.
Yes, that is possible. And the, the challenge to that is, as Jake was mentioning earlier, is that, is that police stations tend to grow organically. And so it's, it's rare that you sort of have one area of a police station that suddenly can grow out 50 feet to the east. And all the other, by doing that, it's sort of like, all these other pieces have to move around. If you think about it like a, a big amoeba, right? These, if you add out this way, you got to move this here and move this here. It is possible, but it can also be, can be costly. But, but thinking about it now, definitely puts you in a better place.
I, I know that we have a convention center that, that is designed to be extended to the south. And I know that convention center is not a police station, but if you have planning and an idea of where you're headed with this whole thing, I, it's a, a way to cut down on the square footage today. Although then we're having to fight this whole thing all over again down the road in another, perhaps, 20 years, when you really do start needing to have that extra space. I want to continue with a couple of little things. You talked about, it was interesting to see this, the population, by the way, of the different cities outside of Oregon that you had compared us to. As an example, Salt Lake City having a population of 178,000 people, I would have thought it would have been considerably more.
What's, well... Larger metro area, but it, it's the population of the actual...
So my question is, basically, of these other comparative cities, how many of them have precincts? And how, how many of them are just all in one location like what we're talking about? Because they're all in the same area of where we're headed, in size.
I can tell you that Salt Lake City does have precincts. They have a small number of precincts and they have a, they, Salt Lake City is a little bit unique, because they actually do have a new, within the last five years, police station that they built. Their police station, I believe, is 260,000 square feet. That includes their 911 center. You know, and that's in addition to a precinct station there. I don't, I don't know the particulars of that. I, actually, I, I should revise that. I think it's 178,000 square feet, but it was a lead platinum project that just opened in the last couple of years.
I noticed they have almost twice the number of, of police officers per thousand than we do.
Right, and that's, that's true of a number of these comparable communities. And there's a, there's a variety of reasons for that, which are probably, we don't have good answers for that, and I think it's too detailed to get into here. But there, there are a variety of reasons why departments staff differently.
Okay, the, the next question I have is, the WVCC, the One Lament Valley Communication Center, it's the 911 center for us and actually for quite a few other communities around the state, is currently leased space. Have you done the cost-benefit? I mean, if, if we're paying X dollars in rent right now, we have a facility, is it enough room? Do we need more room in that WVCC? Does it make sense? There's more to it than just simply trying to move that existing facility to here.
Yeah, there's some positive ROI for, for getting them out of that rental space.
ROI?
Return on investment.
That's what I thought.
Right, sorry. Stop me if I, if I get jargony, yeah.
Okay, and the last thing I want to talk a little bit, just a smidge in reference to the parking growth factors. You chose them for, for both the, what is it, for the police officers, it had 1.39. And you left the, the, you left the public nothing.
Well, basically, what we're saying is that there's no dedicated public parking that's a comparable in the same sort of sense of what this is. So we tried to size the public parking based on the facilities that are provided. So that's why we didn't provide a growth factor for that. The, the police, the police vehicle parking and the staff parking, we feel like are growing consistently with the rest of the facility. And I think if you look at the growth of 73 officers over that time, it represents a 39% total, you know, total growth. So we, we expressed it that way. I think that's something that could be looked at more carefully. I think we looked at this in sort of a, you know, tried to take a direct sort of correlation to that. I think you could look sort of on a car-by-car basis and maybe reduce that rate or change that rate. But I feel like that gives the, the correct sort of scale of what kind of parking is required here.
My comment, other than that, was 40 parking stalls for the public seems light. I, I don't know if it is or isn't, and I have nothing to judge it by, but it seems light to me for the number of square feet that we're talking in the building and the amount of work that's done.
Well, the one, I don't, I don't know that you're, I, I don't think you're wrong in saying that. The, I think the thing is that our experience has shown us that the public parking happens in, in shifts. It happens in small groups. And so we tried to strike a balance to say that if there was a major, major event that, that had something else, that that parking just isn't really sized for, for that. And it probably shouldn't be sized for that. And that, you know, one of the challenges is that you build a very, very large public parking facility, and then you end up with, most times of the day, where that parking lot appears like there's nobody ever parked in it. So I think it's a balance to try to provide a public parking lot that's sized correctly. And so we, we took some artistic liberty with that, I suppose, based on experience, and said that that probably is, is about the right number. As you'll see when we walk through the schemes, there are some other opportunities to sort of facilitate public parking on adjacent parking structures and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. So are the volunteers who come regularly to the police department at different times of the day and night, are they included in staff parking or in public parking?
They're included in staff parking.
In staff, okay, thanks. All right, who was next? Counselor, well, did Counselor Nankey? You're done, all right. All right, okay, we're over to this table. Counselor McCoy or Counselor Bennett? Here you go, your turn.
Okay, thanks. Just a couple of questions on the non-divisional. Is that pretty much a constant in a building? I'm just looking at the kinds of things, you know, stairwell-type lobby, those kinds of things. Is that a fairly constant number relative to it, or is it a fairly elastic number to, as the, as it goes up or down? I mean, if we drop the, the communication center, do we pick up space in the non-divisional?
The non-divisional, I'm trying to remember what's actually in that. I think things like the lunchroom and...
The locker room. You just had it up a few minutes ago.
Right, the locker rooms, the, the exercise room. You know, the locker rooms in a facility like this are a significant square footage...
I just want to understand whether that number moves, or is it a fairly constant number as we hit a certain size of building?
I think it's a fairly consistent number, to be honest with you. And I don't think it's largely affected, WVCC is largely, in, in fact, is entirely civilian population that comes into the facility. So these are not individuals that necessarily get a locker. They are sort of self-sufficient from a certain standpoint. Actually, the WVCC program has its own locker room that's part of it, its own break room that's part of it. 911 telecommunications operate in, in an environment in which they really can't leave their space. So it, it is, it is truly, I think, to answer your question, I think it's truly sort of a standalone kind of entity.
Well, it was about 21, as I recall, about 21,000, 22,000 square feet, so...
It, it's 22,000 square feet, but that also includes the, the emergency operations center, which I think is intrinsic to the operation of the police department. So to separate that out, I quoted a number of 17,000 square feet, and that's extracting the, the EOC from that. That's the 911's component only.
But, but the emergency center is, is in there. I mean, it's part of this, right? We haven't...
It, it is part of the program, yes. There's an emergency operations center with breakout rooms and technology rooms and so forth. That's separate, separate from both the police facility necessarily and the WVCC.
Yeah, I, I think at some point, when, particularly when we go to public hearing, I, I think explaining what that emergency center is, that, what, what exactly, why that has to be part of this project, I think is going to be important, just to explain it. The other, I, I was really struck, as you talked about changing policing. I, I did a tour of the, of the current facility about 40 years ago with the chief, who was very proud of the cells that we had, which... Everything changed in that space. I don't, I'm not sure what you're doing with it right now, but that's, which makes me wonder, you're doing something with it, or you wouldn't have as many square feet as you do at this. Your 28,000, I'm sure would be less, chief. And I'm, I'm encouraged, if I understand, I think, that the space that we have, whatever the number ends up being, is, it can be used for various purposes over time, as policing changes, as our needs change, that these are not spaces so dedicated, like cells were, that it's difficult to change them into another use. That one, probably to me, will be real important, that that be part of this thing.
Yeah, that's an excellent comment. We're seeing not just police facilities, but all facilities being designed to be a lot more adaptable and flexible. Basically, every facility today is, is thought of that way. And that comes down to, when, when we go to draw a line, you know, get our markers out and get the trace paper out, we think about, how long is this wall going to be there? So things like your cores, your core elevators, mechanical rooms, bathrooms, you really don't want to move those things. So you want to be really thoughtful about where those are located. And we would do the same thing for this facility, so that, but other rooms could, could flex as needed. Because we know that, that, that things change and, and, you know, you mentioned the, the cameras that are worn, body cameras.
Well, you know, and actually, that's one of the reasons why, is you look at these options that we'll eventually get to. You know, we have different sized floor plates. And I think, Counselor Anderson, you made the point, you know, is it better to sort of have a concentrated sort of area of, of, of the floor level? And there's, there's pros and cons sort of both ways. But one of the reasons why we tried to isolate components, and I think we isolated investigations, that there's a number of allied investigations components that are located maybe on one level. There are allied sort of patrol elements that are located on another level. There are allied sort of administration and WVCC sort of elements that are located on another level. And part of the reason for that is that there can be flexibility built into those floor plates to allow space to sort of flex between street crimes and the gang unit and criminal investigations. There are some core elements to that, like the interview suite, for example, and having sort of convenient access to the interview suite, and being able to separate privacy and propriety and all of those sort of, sort of things. But within those office spaces, I think there's a great deal of flexibility, and there needs to be a level of flexibility. The other thing is infrastructure and the ability to build a building that is technologically built for infrastructure with cable trays and things that can be easily modified, where 40 years ago, these facilities were built with hard conduit that was very difficult to move and, and, and to, to locate. So I think all of those things sort of conspired to sort of lead us to our solutions.
All right, I think the chief has a comment, question.
I just, and I'm not trying to hijack this, I just want to go back to one of the comments about adding on at a later date, because I've had a lot of discussions with Tim and Jake, and I've had a lot of discussions with other architects, no offense. But I'll, I'll, when we talk about dysfunction, I'll give you a perfect example, and that is, you, you build a facility thinking you can add on later. And I'll just use locker rooms as a perfect example. If, if you build a certain size of a locker room, and then later on, you need to add locker rooms because you add more officers or you've taken a bigger part of the urban growth boundary, you can't put those lockers next to the other lockers. And ultimately, you, you run into dysfunction as far as adjacencies and where people are. We have that now. We have a locker room, we have some people that don't have lockers, we have the corps that has lockers in one area, and we have another group of people that have lockers where the old jail used to be. So I'm not trying to get you to talk about adding space at a later date, but I think we have to be careful when we think we can just add another floor or build on to a thing, because I think the adjacencies in every modern police facility that I've seen are critically important. And once you've built a space, when it gets too big, it's very difficult to just add room somewhere else for that, so...
Well, and, you know, chief, that even goes to the idea of sort of lockers, the type of lockers that they have, that they can house the sort of equipment that police officers carry today, that there are lockers for people's duty bags that contain AEDs and cameras and so on and so forth, and flashlights. So things that need to be charged. And so there's a cohesiveness to this that makes adding on very challenging in the future, except for maybe some very particularly targeted sort of long-term growth areas, and I use evidence as an example of that.
Okay, are we set? All right, we're going to, we're going to, oh, Counselor McCoy! I'm so sorry. I just want you to know, I'm going to treat you like everybody else, so...
No, you don't, you ignore me.
No, I did, but I've been, I've been missing them too. Counselor McCoy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Been waiting so long, I forgot what I asked, I'm an old guy.
I'm sorry.
A couple of things, Jake. When we talk about the 48,000 we're in now, one of the things I think that surprised, I think, members on the initial Blue Ribbon Committee and the, and the public that listened, was we were getting, I think, anyway, my understanding was, okay, it's 75 to 100,000 or 110,000 square feet.
Right.
We were thinking that was, you know, the useful area you're going to use, and then you come in and, and basically, and it makes total sense. Well, wait a minute, we've got a factor of 3, 30%, 1.3, that you got to add in, because you got the hallways and all the infrastructure and elevator shafts and the walls and all that. So all of a sudden, that 110, at the one end, ends up at 150, right?
That, that, that's an accurate statement. And actually, Counselor, just to respond to that, you know, we did a sort of side-by-side assessment of the prior programs that were done. And one of the things that's interesting is that the 75,000 square foot program that was assembled, if you put the same grossing factor on that same program, it's really 99,000 square feet. Okay, that's number one. The prior program that was done at, I think it was right around... Hang on a second, I'm looking at, oh, I'm, I'm, let me, let me do this the other way. That if you look at the 2007 program that was done, that was 70, or, I'm sorry, it was, with the right factor, it was 111,000 square feet. And the 2010 program that was 75,000 square feet is really 87,000 square feet using the same grossing factors. So we tried to correct for something that we felt like wasn't really done appropriately in the first place. And this is not to sort of cast dispersions, I think there was good work that was done in the past. But at the same point in time, you know, sort of equivalent to equivalent, I think you had a prior program that was at 111,000 square feet and another one that was 87. And so putting the 150 sort of in its right perspective, it's not as large of a leap as, as maybe it seemed at the surface of the numbers that were sort of being used publicly.
So the 48,000 we cite now that the police are using, does that include that factor? Or is that just a blunt amount?
Well, I guess in a manner of speaking, it includes that factor. The grossing factors that we use are, are, are means of taking a numerical program and trying to translate it to become a real facility. There, there is a factor that exists in the building, that it, there's a certain number of corridors, there are stairways, there are non-negotiable sort of items of the building that don't aid to the sort of function of the building. We have not done an analysis of what the actual grossing factor of the existing facility and facilities are. If you look at the 28,000 square feet... If you look at the twenty-eight thousand square feet that are on the lower level of the Civic Center, I would tend to suggest that probably that grossing factor is in the range of about twenty, twenty-five percent. That's just, that's really just a guess, but that, that is part of that, and that's non-functional square footage.
Okay, but I just want to, you know, we have people in public and listening. It gets, you get into these numbers and you at least get a grip on, okay, if it's forty-eight and it was a quarter, okay, then it's thirty-six thousand square feet of useful space. Or if you're going to go gross-to-gross, it's forty-eight versus a hundred and fifty. In either case, it's three times the amount of space, whichever number you start from. But it does get confusing with that coming up. We've talked before in the subcommittee about, okay, well, there's, there's, what we've designed is the, in our case, best-case scenario, okay? If we've got, if we could have everything we want in this police facility, and including space for the future and be comfortable with it, this is what we'd have. And, you know, and, and, and in previous meetings, Mr. Davis has come in and said, "Okay, forget what we're doing now, and forget the processes you're used to using. We're going to use state-of-the-art police processes as they're used. They're sort of the best practices across the United States when we design this station." So, we have departments that interact, sort of placed together. And so, what we've got is, you know, is the best of all worlds. Well, we live in a sort of a political atmosphere here, and so, when, you know, we talk about maybe ways to reduce it, it's dealing with political realities versus the best thing we could possibly have. And so, my question's going to be, we talk about ways to cut the cost, and one you had was just a basic, just a gross, pick a percentage. We're cutting it, I think that's what that said, we're going to cut it ten percent, we're going to cut it fifteen percent, right? Is that one, I mean, you said a percentage deal. And so, I want to make sure I understand it. Unilateral reduction of square footage based on a percentage, so.
Right, I'm, I'm saying that you could, you could take a sort of an across-the-board sort of cut at it. I, the, the reason that I don't, I don't recommend that is that I don't think that that's tailored to the, to the, to the facts of the matter, but.
Yeah, so, I would throw one other out here that's not on here. I just, I got to thinking, if I was watching this, we've got, you're basing it on square foot and officer, and we got the IA, CPS, whatever it is.
Right.
You know, it's four hundred to eight hundred, and we're at a little over five hundred, it looks like, right?
Correct.
Five hundred something.
About five hundred and twenty-three.
I mean, if we reduce that, say to four fifty, or four twenty, or whatever, um, square feet per officer, is another way to do it. That would be a way to do it, it's a percentage, I guess, still, but does that make a difference in how you, you start doing things? I mean, the, basically, all those offices are now ten percent less?
I thi, I think that's the, I think that's the struggle. I think you'd have to look at, you know, maybe reducing the staff numbers accordingly and.
Which is the other one, yeah. Okay, well, it's still at some point a discussion to be had here, if, if really where we're at in the best-case scenario, which I hope we get to is the one or not, but get these all on the board. Thank you. And again, as being on the subcommittee that deals with this before we get here, I would say, I went through with Deputy Chief Belshaw, the spreadsheet that they developed, which, you know, there, there is being a wave there, and it, it is detailed by department, by use, where the offices are, how they're interacting, where there's space, where it's sort of community, where you've got a number of different entities using the same space.
Hotel, hoteling space.
This isn't the Taj Mahal where everybody has an office and everybody has what you want. It's designed in a way for growth, number one, but two, to make the best use of that space and the most efficient use of that space, combining different divisions or departments that work together, and the best daily use of that space, so it's being used the most time. We don't have dead space just sitting there most of the time. I was totally impressed with that, and it, it got me a little more on board with, geez, we got to this number, but boy, looking at that where you start cutting it, because it's not, it's, this isn't like, you know, everything you ever wanted, every goodie the police departments ask for. It's, this is a working system that I think is very well-designed, so.
Well, thank you for saying that. And just, you know, one, one quick sort of comment in response to that, Commissioner. It, it, I think that this is still a pretty modest request, if you look at it in, in response to sort of the peer group. It's still at, even at this projection, it's at the low end of the, the peer group. There's a fairly small number of growth. I think there's been a valid point made about what the, what that rate is. But even with respect to that, at the, at the one point eight rate or at the two point four rate, it's still a pretty modest growth that does not put the Salem Police Department into a different category. I think it's sort of slides along, even though the square footage comes up kind of considerably. I think it, there's been a deficiency here, and the part of this is fixing, I think a number of you have made comments to that effect. It's fixing that deficiency, and it's planning for the future to some degree. To what degree you do that is, is, is very much, you know, is, is very much the community's and the board's call.
Okay, we've got a couple of questions, I think, here. Counselor Anderson and then Counselor Bednarz.
Thank you. I'm following up on what Counselor McCoy said. It's the third alternative, which is, you know, just say fifteen percent cut and cut it across the board. If we approached that a different way, and we said, "We would like you to end up with X square feet," then it would be within your area of expertise and qualifications, working with the chief, to say, "Here's how we would reduce it to that," which may be large reductions in one area and small or no reductions in another area.
I, I think, I think that that's an excellent approach, if, if, if that's something that you were looking to do.
Yeah, so if we say, "Here's the bottom line," you would tell us how to get there, not us saying, "We want to cut everything a certain percentage."
Yeah, I think you want to take a tailored cut, not a, not a, not an across-the-board.
And that's, that's what, that's your expertise. One final comment, and this relates to, I think, what the police chief and you were talking about, and Tim were talking about, adjacency and how that works for what happens in the future. You know, I'm wondering, and this especially might be true, if we end up with some of the areas that are in the urban growth boundary coming into the city, maybe someplace down the future, instead of expanding what we've got adjacent, we want to take that and we want to put a precinct someplace out there, which would end up with the same bottom-line result. We have more square feet for the police officers, we just have them, you know, in a, a much bigger central office and then a precinct someplace out. And I'm wondering if the chief could talk about that any, thank you.
Well, Counselor, I think that's very possible. I think, I think Jake and his crew are probably more of an expert on that than I am, having studied many other cities. But when I talked about space in the past, I've talked about small substations or offices. And one of the comments I've made is that as you do that, your, your need to have staff support doubles. And also, when I've visited many cities, many of those out, adjacent, those offices that are outside of the main police facility are rarely open. And I think it probably comes down to staffing. When you build a precinct, I'll, I'll use Portland as a perfect example. They're big enough where they had, I think at one point they had five or six precincts, and I think they have two or three now, because they've cut back on those as well. So, I think you have to be careful saying, when you, when you added a distinct area that you're, you're definitively going to put in a precinct. But, but I would agree with you, I think that's a possibility, and that's something as a professional police agency in a city that we would look at.
I guess you're sort of saying we're back to the fire station quandary we have now.
Yeah, yeah, and we should keep in mind, if we think down the road we're going to build any substations, how's that going to be paid for? And when's that going to be paid for? And there's going to be a cost. There's nothing that's free, so we.
I wasn't speaking about the cost, I was speaking about the adjacent problem that we build and try to build on someplace else.
Right.
I know it's going to get costly.
But, yeah, well, if, if we establish precincts, there's an additional cost more than the square footage of the building. You've got the bricks and mortar to pay for, and then you've got these other costs that go along with having people in it. One of the things that I think has kept us from looking at substations in recent years is the fact that every, every patrol car is a substation now with technology. So, that's why some of these cities have closed those substations. They're really not as necessary as they were. Did we get all those questions answered? Counselor Bednarz, and then I think we'll try to get back on to the PowerPoint. It's all right.
I have a little question, and I asked this at the last committee meeting that we had. Why does the, why does the presentation have draft in it? I know what we were handed here tonight, what's on our desk is, does not have the word "draft" on it, but it seems like we're in the.
Mine does. It's all still draft.
Just curious, I, I feel like we're, we are in the throes of talking about this, and it's not a draft anymore. Oh, some of them doing, some of them doing.
Okay, doesn't really matter.
I think from our perspective, it, it's information that hasn't been formally accepted yet, that, and I think it's as simple as that.
Okay, and the other question I had was, this, the, the program needs the matrix that you put together, that I, I also agree is, is wow, it's incredible detail here. Are the other city councilors going to be able to get a copy of that?
Well, I think they do.
Everybody did.
I think, does, does everybody have that?
Do you have this? Yes, yeah, a lot different.
No, I think what you're pointing to.
I'm pointing to this, this matrix that, that shows all the square footage per cubicle and per bathroom and per whatever.
Right, we didn't hand that out tonight.
No.
You had to meet with D.C. Belshaw to get that, I think.
I think maybe we've done that in, maybe in other discussions, or maybe that was in preparation. Was that in preparation for going out to the, view the four sites or something?
No, it was, the Deputy Chief contacted us and said, "Would you like to come down and see it?"
Oh, I see, okay, that's how that happened.
It's one of those things that, that verifies why we came to a hundred and forty-eight thousand square feet, and that's going to be a big issue, because that drives costs and, and a lot of other things that go along there. And, and if the councilors can see what's in the information that's in there, it might help them.
Right, exactly, okay. We'll make sure that, that they, that they have had that. Okay, good, all right. I think we're ready to go back on the PowerPoint discussion and back on our agenda. This has been, I think this has been very helpful to have these questions, so thank you for that time. And then, so we're back on item five, if I'm correct, on our agenda, reviewing the conceptual design for the four sites. Is this where we are?
That's correct.
All right, we're on target, thank you.
So, we're, I think a good starting place to think about these is obviously the program, which is the list of spaces, which gives us a total of area. Counselor Anderson was asking about, about the buildable area of sites. So, we're taking into account the size of the building, we're taking into account the parking when we're thinking about these, these sites. And what, and some of the diagrams you see here on screen are the ways that the program could actually stack vertically, how the program could be organized. But when we think about that, and then we move on to the sites, one of the first things we do is what we call a site analysis. And what, what that means for us is, we want to be very objective, logical, and realistic about your sites. And so, what we like to do is collect as much data and do, do as much research as we can, because that data informs really good design decisions, right? Where can we find value? Were we making, are we making the right decision? Are we locating the building in the right place? Are we locating this police facility in the most efficient way so that it's functioning? And so, we, we call that a site analysis. And things that we look at are, are traffic, access to the site, views of the site, and topography, because all these things come into play when you think about planning a site. And so, those are test fits. If you think back early on, we talked about the, the two sites that really rose to the top, and that's what we're going to focus on for these first two sites, and that's the O'Brien site as well as the Leslie site. So, Sites Two and Site Thirteen are what we're going to focus on. And we, we do have the other two.
Yeah, because we wanted to do all four tonight.
Definitely, we definitely can.
Right.
We just thought we'd start with the, the, we can do it the other way as well. We thought we'd start with the ones that are, that are the most successful, so that we spend more time on those, because there's fundamental flaws about the other two sites, one being topography and site access, as well as some floodplain issues. There's a, there's one of the sites, Site Fifteen, about, over half of the site is in a floodplain. Not saying you cannot build in a floodplain, but, but we wanted to be, there's some FEMA guidelines that are going to be changing potentially over the years, and so, we wanted to be mindful of that.
You know, I think rather than start with two and talk a lot about those two and then kind of dismiss the others, I would rather, and I think that I'm hearing murmurs, we want to do all four, we want a fair analysis of all four, pluses and minuses, and then drill down on, on, beyond that, then we'll see if we're drilling down beyond that. I want to be fair to the selection and really looking at all those sites, okay?
I want to be very clear about one point, too. You know, to your point, Mayor, we took an equal look at all four sites.
Oh, I'm sure you did.
The same, the same analysis was, was taken with all of the sites. I think what we were trying to sort of express is some of our initial findings, and I think this will bubble out of the conversation.
Right, but let's treat all four equally to start with tonight, okay?
Then, why don't we do them in order sequentially? Does that sound okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
One, two, thirteen, and fifteen?
Okay, that's good.
So, I will skip ahead to number one here, so, close your eyes. Can't miss this. So, Site One, what you're seeing here is a site map, so, a sort of a plan view of the site at a, at a higher level. We're really drilling down here and collecting information about things like topography, things about, you know, rising of the sun, setting of the sun, it all has an impact on the building, believe it or not, like good orientation, really smart planning early on. And that really starts with, with, with research and, and data collection about the sites.
And traffic and everything, too?
Traffic and everything else. We're also thinking about some, about surrounding resources, and you'll see that in some of the schemes, I think Counselor Nanki brought up, well, some areas might be closer to existing community rooms, as well as existing parking, right? So, there's parking management opportunities that exist on one site versus another site. And so, we're taking into account all of that when we're going through these four sites.
Good, okay.
And, and like Jake said, we're being extremely objective about it, because we, you know, and that's really our role here.
Yeah.
But also be mindful, we need a functioning police station.
Oh, sure.
Highly functioning.
Right, right, okay, so we're starting with which site?
So, this is Site One.
And where is that?
Directly west of us.
Right, this is Commercial, Commercial Street across from, from the Civic Center. The Civic Center actually is just to the right on the.
Oh, that's the one we call Windows to the West?
Windows to the West, right.
Oh, okay, thank you, all right.
The library is located down here.
Okay.
We are here.
Right, and it's, it's, it's located kind of between Commercial, Commercial Street and Mill Creek, sort of on the, the west side of that, that site.
So, I'll just walk through this pretty quickly. If there's any questions, please stop me. There's basically significant, significant topography on the site, which makes it challenging in terms of putting a building and/or parking, because they tend to like flat areas, especially the size of building that we're, that we're talking about. So, at the corner, the high part of the site is actually at the corner of Oak and Commercial. I don't know if anyone's been over there.
Sure, for sure.
And slopes down to the low point, which is Bellevue, and, and there's a roundabout here now, right? What we quickly, quickly realize is there's, not quite, but almost a quarter of the site, about a fifth of the site, that is extremely difficult to build in.
Or, or impossible to build in.
Or impossible. It's a riparian setback zone, significant topography, it drops up to forty feet in this area, extremely expensive to build on. And, and when you already have a small site, this is the smallest site of the four, it's extremely challenging, to the point that, that in order to build here, it becomes very dense. I mentioned earlier about, about stacked parking. This would require a, a, a large parking footprint, and then you have to build vertically on top of that. Keep in mind that with public parking, they can only really park in certain areas of a police station. Obviously, you don't want public parking underneath squad vehicles, for obvious reasons. So, there's a security aspect about how you separate public parking from staff parking from patrol parking, and these diagrams and studies take that into account.
Right, and that's the railroad that runs along the.
Yes.
Correct.
West side, so there's no expansion possible, even if we were building something there, we're really locked in.
Right.
The, the big advantage to this site is that it's already owned by the city and then that, and its central location, obviously, being the other major prop.
So, if we move on to, to how we actually test it, this is sort of the test fit. So, same scale, same drawing as before, and I'm going to walk through the levels of the building, starting with the lowest level of the building and, and walking upwards. A lot of topography, so the way that, that we really could fit the capacity of vehicles here, which included forty parking spaces, a hundred and seventy-five spaces for police parking, and the two hundred and forty for staff parking, we end up having to build a structured parking facility with the building on top. That's how small of a site this is.
And the parking deck takes up the entire site.
And the parking tech, deck would be spanning over the riparian zone and the, the huge drop. So, there's, I think there's just significant challenges to this that. So there's, I think there's just significant challenges to this that makes it a true challenge. The other thing is actually access, right? There's only a handful of ways to get, to get in and out of the facility. So this is showing that we would have this deck, and if you can look down here, this is a section, what we call a section, so imagine like chopping through the building and looking one direction. So in this case, we're chopping through the building and we're looking this way. So on the next, next level up, we're showing the building on top of the parking, so we're at this level now, if that makes sense.
And we're actually ramping up to, this twenty-four thousand square foot level would contain things like the evidence area, it would contain the crime lab, the quartermaster space, the jail or holding area that would be part of that, so the Sally Port, which is shown there at the top of the diagram, would be part of this kind of small holding area. And those areas are necessary to access sort of off of the street, so they'd be at the lowest level of the building, and you'll see that on a number of these schemes.
It places a greater emphasis and challenge to the ground floor plate, especially on a smaller site, because there's all these things that want to be there, the Sally Port, which requires the drives to get through them and the safe way to deliver inmate delivery.
But to specific, to Councilor Anderson's question about sort of the mass of square footage on the main level, one of the things is while that might be, that might be a good thing, that might be ideal in a sense, not one of these sites really afforded the opportunity to do it.
I see.
That's why you're seeing four, four-level buildings, in this case, it's five levels, you know, counting from down low. And we basically have to do this because it's the smallest site, it's pretty simple. This would be the most expensive one of all of them.
Okay.
So we're looking at the second level, or we're calling it level one, and we call this one a basement, because there's really nothing down there but cars.
First level of the building.
First level of the actual building. And we could actually get to it from Bellevue, as well as sloping down from Oak to sort of that structured parking level.
The benefit is that you could actually access some of those garages and things like that from the parking deck, and so it'd be an enclosed space that you could access those things from. That's probably the positive about it. The negative about it is that it's really maximizing the site with parking.
Right. So as we move up through the building, we're at the second level, which is really the Oak Street level. If you think about the topography, it's significant. So the difference from all the way down at Bellevue up to Oak is basically two levels, two full levels, one, two, so. Basement up to... So in a way, it's not a, it's a, we're trying to create, we're trying to find opportunity within the sites to create an efficient and functional design, and so that's one way to do that, to use topography in your favor. And then above that, basically levels three and four, simply stack, stack above. Now, this allows for the public parking deck to be off of Oak Street, so that would be where the public parking would exist. But again, the challenge is here is where, is the riparian setback, which is additional sort of impact on the design on this site.
Is the riparian setback an area that we cannot build on, or that's an area where we have to do like a mitigation to take that, save land somewhere else?
Correct.
Mitigate, okay, thanks.
And with that comes costs and challenges, and you know, there's reasons why those zonings exist.
The parking deck would have to structurally span over the top of it, which would involve a different sort of structural design, then, we don't want to overstate it, but there are some significant challenges in terms of actually making that happen, which do translate to cost at a basic level.
So you're saying like there would be some habitat disruption, et cetera, building there?
Potentially. I'm not an environmentalist, but that would be something we'd have to think about and get additional studies.
Thanks, okay. Any question on this? Councilor Bednarz?
I really, really don't want to ask this question, but I feel if I don't, it's going to be a disservice for this discussion, and that has to do with, well gee, you've just taken Woodbury's Furniture, and you've taken some, I think there's a salon back there and some other things.
There is a salon.
The other side would have been Golden's Funeral, to take the next area to the south. Of course, that would have to go into the fact, I have no idea what zone they fit into, but I mean, obviously that business has been around for years, and I don't want to see it disappear, but it would have to go to another site of some sort, and that would have to go through the process.
Well, no, I'm glad, it's good.
Yeah, yeah, Counselor, I think you're, Tim is going to address that, because what we concluded on this site, because of the difficulty for developing it with the program, is it would be feasible only if you did acquire the property you're talking about, and we've been proactive in looking at that, and you're going to see that shortly.
We'll have to pull that up from another, another drive here, but...
Right, we have looked at that, we have the ability to look at it. I think we feel like that is beset with some challenges as well, in terms of sort of the remoteness of the parking, and essentially, the city-owned site would need to be used as more or less a parking lot or surface parking area, and then what, you're not taking sort of best advantage of that by doing that, but we can look at that separately if that's something that the council is interested in.
I just thought it would be a disservice if we didn't at least consider it, take it out of the box.
We can, we can talk about that, we can find that one now, or we can do it towards the end. It basically means we're taking the mortuary, really to make that one work, we would need to take the mortuary site as well as the next site south of that.
Both of those sites actually are needed to make it work.
Because you really need to get, it's about access, you need to really get to Leslie in order to...
Well, at that point, Oak Street's disappeared, because you've gone over the top of it.
Right, so I want to point out two zoning and planning components here that are critical to understand about this idea. What essentially happens is the riparian zone setback continues to the south on the two properties we just talked about acquiring. And so if you want to think about it conceptually, what essentially happens is, from a buildable area standpoint, you can have both of those blocks, if you want to call them that, but you can really only build on the eastern half of that. Essentially, parking lots building anything, and so by acquiring all that property, you're essentially really only acquiring half of it for buildable area.
We talked about some other, you'll come on the other two sites that we'll be talking about, we talked about, in some of this flood zone areas, we can use parking there, we can't put a building there. Is that the same thing with the riparian?
Yeah, if you just honor the riparian zone setback as it stands now, you do nothing in it.
Right, which, so, since we're talking about this idea, I might as well just pull it up and really, really, so we did study that, because we went there understanding the challenges here. This has got significant topography, as we've already addressed, with the riparian and the topography here. The best place to place a building is actually on the site. This is the most level part of the site, is right here where the mortuary is. And so really to take the greatest advantage of this and the value is to, is to take the property to Leslie. And like we mentioned earlier, this site basically becomes a parking lot on grade, because it has so much topography. To place a parking lot, a structured parking lot there and a building is really economically not viable.
Doesn't that drop the cost a little bit if you're doing it grade then?
Sure, absolutely, oh yeah, ungrade parking is concrete on the ground.
No question does, but it also takes a site that the city already owns, and it doesn't put the building on it.
Right, and then that, the lighter, where it's actually the darker green to the west of your drawing, that's the riparian area?
The riparian is here.
Just in that section, or does it go south of Oak Street?
It continues down the...
Oh yeah, it does.
It becomes narrower.
It becomes narrower here, actually.
So this scheme would need continued refinement and analysis of that riparian zone. And then the other component is that even if we vacate Oak Street, your current zoning codes would require that that remain as a view corridor, so you essentially can't build on that. And so those are all, those are all good things for your city, and they're there for a reason, to preserve the natural area, to let people walk up to the river or look at the river. So these are important planning concepts that are inherent in your current zoning statutes that would want to try and be honored by the project or changed by you, so your project could happen. Those would be your considerations.
I've never heard of a view, leaving a street for a view in that case. Is it uninterrupted buildings along a side?
It's a view corridor zoning requirement. It's an existing view corridor, and it has to be maintained, so that you're not cutting off the river from your city patrons, is the way I would understand the intent of that code.
So consequently, we're also showing a bridge that goes between the parking and... Correct.
Are people beginning to feel like, thank you for this information?
Right.
Are we moving on?
We certainly didn't want to jump to a conclusion, but obviously, having looked at this at a level of detail, we've...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Besides, if you get rid of that, there's no place to shoot a turkey, too.
So we'll move back, so again, close your eyes, we'll move back to site two.
Site two, talk amongst yourselves.
No, no, you were at site two, there you go.
Yeah.
All right, site two.
So site two, another, you know, again, the site analysis, what can we, what do we learn about the site? What data, data-driven decisions, facts that we know about the site, to make a logical assumption about the most functional place to place the police station.
And for clarity, this is the site that's just south of the library parking deck at Leslie Street, and it's bound by Commercial, Liberty, and Mission Streets, Mission Street on the south, and Commercial and Leslie on the east and west, respectively.
So I think the first thing that really jumped out at us with the pros of this is really about access. I mean, you have access at four, on four sides, you can, police can quickly go, or public can go, quickly go in multiple directions from the site, which is a big plus here.
The other significant benefit of this site is that it has access to at least a portion of an existing parking deck.
And we'll get to the parking management, and so think about city resources, how can we use the most efficient way? This site allows us to use parking in a manner that may help us build less parking for this project. So this, that's a big plus for this, for this site.
And if you consider the fact that a parking stall that's within a structured parking deck ranges in cost probably between about thirty-five and forty thousand dollars per car, being able to utilize existing parking deck spaces is of some high value.
I think obviously it sort of falls within the civic corridor as well, so this is the alley of civic buildings being, you know, in a way this might end it along Mission and Liberty. Obviously, it has great visibility, so heading north on Liberty Street, or even south on Commercial, the site has a lot of visibility.
The negatives, though, about this site is that it's small, it's similar in size to the city-owned property on Commercial Street. It's made up of multiple parcels, multiple existing uses that are on that site.
And there's some topography, so this is the high point, and it slopes down to the low point at the corner of Liberty and Mission. But again, the scheme you'll see, we try to take advantage of that topography.
Right, for all those reasons, I think it becomes sort of an intriguing site.
So as we move to the scheme, again, the lowest level is what I'm showing first, and it's level one, it's a straight-up four-level building. And so we're actually thinking about the parking and the parking deck using the topography to our favor. So thinking about the existing parking garage here, we're actually south of that, but we're much lower than that. And so by locating the building on the lower part of the site, it would have the most presence, so you'd have a great, great presence along Liberty Street as well as Commercial. It'd be very easy to find in terms of wayfinding for the public. You could actually, you know, kind of circle around the building. We're proposing that the public parking would be at grade here, we're at this level right here, so the section or the cut through the building is through here, and we're looking to my left. And so the lowest level of the building would basically be about at Mission Street. And then there would be at-grade parking here, nothing above this level right here, there's no parking above that level. That level of parking is pretty much at grade, would continue across. There would be one level of parking above this piece, so there's a clear delineation of public parking and staff and police parking, so there's no crossover in terms of security. It also allows access off of Commercial Street for police, and if you wanted to, you could actually continue through here, so you could have a gate here, so the police could actually come in and out, either on and off of Commercial or on and off of Liberty Street.
Gated access, we find, is an important element of the deployment of police facilities, and it's a level of detail that probably is not appropriate at this point in time, but it's something to sort of ponder.
It also puts the, you know, we thought it would be a great place for the community room on the corner, so sort of celebrating the public pieces of the building, this is a building for the public, so it could be located there. As we move up...
Right, all these schemes show kind of symbols for public entry and private entry, so to speak, staff entry.
And so this level here is basically the lowest level of the library parking. I want to be clear that this does not impact library parking, because there are currently staff, city staff parking lot spaces on the highest level of the parking garage, and we'll get to that as we move up the building. So we're at this level, which is basically Leslie Street, and as I mentioned, slopes from high to low, so we're taking advantage of the topography, so we end up with really just one level of structured parking, which is in this zone. The beauty of that is it allows you to come on and off of Leslie, so this is really, for police vehicles, you have on and off of Leslie, you can go either direction, north or south, and so it has a pretty good access point in terms of flow of vehicles.
The other benefit, Tim, of that is that at that upper level of the parking deck, it also aligns, and really, Chief, I think this is sort of for you in a way, it aligns with where the patrol functions of the building would be, so the on-shift vehicles could be parked directly outside of where their roll call room and so forth are. So that kind of goes to the notion of adjacency that's kind of baked into the program, but it's a way of dispatching it on the site.
So as we move up the building, levels three and four are pretty much, are very similar, but I'm showing that, again, we would not be taking any of the stalls from the library, so this would be really the second level of the library deck, and then as we move up to the, really the fourth level, we would, of the building, which is toward the south, we would claim the one hundred and ten staff spaces that are already there. So this is where the value of the scheme comes into play, in terms of parking, we're not building more parking, it's more of a parking management. And you know, back to Counselor Nanki's, like, I mean, what are our resources here in the city that we could leverage? So that's, that's that scheme.
It also, Tim, maybe you want to elaborate on this, but it also leads to a fairly slender building, long slender building, that's oriented in an east-west direction.
Yeah, there's architectural significance in terms of, we're thinking about operational cost, so if we can, we can orient this building so that the major facades face north and south, there's less solar gain. I don't know if any of your bedroom windows face east or west, but they tend to heat up, and so the more often we can, and this isn't, this is just a very simple, smart way to design, it doesn't cost anymore, it actually costs you less, because we're thinking about it in a very straightforward way, day one.
So, so the top level of the library would be for employee parking, which it is now?
Correct.
Not, it would be for, not for police cars, but for employees?
For police staff.
Staff.
Correct.
And we have, the next slide, we show how the other, we've thought through the actual parking, you know, overall, like, where do these guys go?
Right, right.
And that's been thought through, so we, the next slide takes us through that.
Yeah, so that's a great lead-in, so let's go ahead and show that next slide. So we thought it was important to sort of zoom out a bit, and make sure we understood the context of capturing those one hundred and ten stalls for what I'd call dedicated police use. So what does that mean? Because that's currently city permit parking for other city employees, and so they have to go somewhere, and so it was important to just zoom out and do this analysis, and I'm not going to read every number to you, but the big idea is that, you know, working with the chief and understanding how you utilize parking now on the campus, on your civic campus, there's approximately one hundred and thirty stalls used for various police functions in your city hall parking structure and the Windows to the West property. So if we move all them onto what I'd call the consolidated scheme parking, whether that's in the parking Tim presented in the new construction zone, or whether that's the one hundred and ten stalls on top, that's more of a, that's, you know, that's the zoning. So if they all come over there, what does that mean? Well, we free up those one hundred and thirty stalls, so the one hundred and ten that we've displaced simply go where... a hundred-and-thirty stalls. So, the hundred-and-ten that we've displaced simply go where those hundred-and-thirty were. In fact, you got your twenty more to the good.
Right.
The other thing, as I understand, you've been contemplating over the years, is what are our opportunities on the civic campus for improving parking, especially surface parking adjacent to the library and City Hall? And so, those are delineated here. And the rough count for those is approximately fifty-two stalls that could be fairly economically constructed on your campus. So, when we look at the, sort of, the twenty extra and those fifty-two, you know, that's approximately the seventy-five stalls that brings you from the three-hundred-and-seventy that would be on the dedicated police parking on this scheme to the four-hundred-and-forty-five number that's part of the master plan. So, the answer that we see here is there, this is a way to improve the efficiency of your parking assignments and meet your master plan parking goal, essentially, on your existing civic campus with the addition of this project.
Without building an enormous stack.
Without building more decks.
I'm really glad you did this analysis. I've always kind of wondered, well, they're parking somewhere here now, anyway.
Exactly. We had to prove out the horse trade that it actually worked.
So, just to be sure, that top level is used for city employees, not library patrons?
He needs his microphone.
That's correct. So, there's no change in the, in how the library patrons are currently served. That would remain in place.
Or, or the exit from the library parking deck toward the library, which would be untouched.
Still there.
I'm sorry, say that again, please?
There's an exit out of the parking structure toward the drive that where the book, the book return is, and that would not be impacted at all by this addition.
Yeah, we're not putting squad vehicles and that.
Right, right. I think we've got questions.
Mine, just real quick, this, this is assuming the full number of police officer additions over the thirty years.
Right.
So, if we were slightly less in that, these numbers would be able to...
Would go down consequently, yes.
Counselor Bednarz, should you have your hand up? And then, Counselor Anderson, then we've got questions over here.
When we visited the site, one of the things that came to mind was Leslie Street might disappear. I hope that's not another windows to the, to the, to the River View. I hope not. But, anyway, the idea was if Leslie Street was closed between Liberty and Commercial Street, you could squeeze up. And I had, I'd basically said, could they take half that block instead of taking the whole block?
We, we looked at that initially, and as we did more detailed research, what we understand is your newest water line that you've just paid for and haven't taken the stickers off of yet is under that street. And we have a hard time advising that we would close that. But, I think the bigger reality is what Tim presented. When we actually back off from that street and think about putting the building on the south part of the site, it actually opens up those opportunities for connecting to this site on those three sides for vehicle circulation, especially for the police access. And I think it's just a better urban planning solution from where the building would sit. So, I don't think there's any dramatic reason to close that street. And it's also a very important cut-through street. I would have to say, as a visitor to your city, I've probably used that street more than any other street.
Well, I recognize, we have mega blocks in downtown, the State Capitol being one, Willamette being another, the hospital being another, and we don't want to cut off those streets needlessly.
Right.
The other question I had, had to deal with the city, the windows-to-the-west, could that be, as an example, it is now starting to get away. We don't have to have it as much. Did you look about if we put that one back on the tax rolls, sold it off? You do have to cross a major street to get from that parking lot, so it's not something that the public has been doing. It's something that the, the police and other people, staff have been using, but...
I think that would be up to you to study. You would certainly lose the parking quantity that was there. And I think this diagram, then, would have to be reevaluated.
It's about forty-eight spaces there right now, but...
Yeah, I saw that. It's just, I know, it's less used just because you have to cross the, all those lanes.
Yeah.
Counselor Anderson, and then we have some questions over here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question was asked and answered by Counselor Bednarz, but don't forget Counselor McCoy. He may have a question over there.
All right. Counselor Bennett, and then we'll go...
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna comment on this one.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. We have a, we have a number of components that'll go into this whole issue. And I can tell you that the possible addition of surface parking on Peace Plaza is probably not something we want to talk about as part of this project. Now, whether that comes at some future date, that'll be for another council to decide, and they can deal with it. I would rather not put that onto the table. I just don't think it's part of this discussion. I'm not, I don't agree with it. I don't like it on there. I think it creates a, a component to this that we've looked at and walked away from a couple of times. And I'd like to keep walking away from that. I understand, it shows us some potential stalls, but I just think it is not a, it's not an idea that I personally support, and it's not one that I think we would find community support for, and we would just add to the problems of just discussing this site, unrelated to this site, if that makes sense.
And I think, if I'm not mistaken, that was more in the turnout area, which would entail moving, relocating where the bus stop is. But, that was not touching the Peace Plaza area with this scheme here.
I, I, I just would like to see that just disappear and no longer be discussed as part of this proposal. I just think it's a mistake at this point.
Okay.
I do have to, I do have to mention that, that we do gain the possibility of, of being efficient with, with parking.
Mm-hmm.
But, one of the challenges is topography. So, this is not a flat site. So, there are, there is some site costs related to that, just to point it out.
But, you know, what, I think what's sort of interesting to look at is that there's some trade-offs. You know, I think if you look at the relative sites, we haven't looked at the, at the O'Brien Auto site yet. But, you know, that site is, by contrast, is relatively flat. But, the, the breakdown is that, you know, you have to build a more significant parking deck there to accommodate the, the total parking need whereby utilizing at least the library parking deck, the top level of the library parking deck, it offsets some of that need. But, it, but then, on the flip side, there's some significant site sort of grading cost and so forth. So, they tend to sort of net out from that perspective. They both have their sort of highs and lows.
Uh-huh. It sounds, though, like every site has grading challenges, just about.
To some degree, I would say that the, the Site Thirteen probably has the least sort of grading issues relative to it. The other three sites have significant grading.
Least grading issues, but you have to build more structured parking.
Right.
Because you're not, you don't, you don't have other struck, parking around to borrow from.
Right, okay.
If that makes sense.
I think Counselor McCoy, did you have a question?
Yep.
Are you sure?
Madam Mayor, I had just one more quick one in regards to the, the library parking structure. And that came before us several years ago, when Water Place was getting ready to go up, and somebody wanted to use some of that space. And I'm trying to remember if there was an opportunity to actually add an additional layer on it.
Additional level?
Another level on top of...
Know about that one.
Because I think that question came up in that discussion.
Yeah, and I, Alan, I think you can answer that from the inventory.
Madam, Madam Mayor, if I could, just with that structure, it's probably at its limit in terms of the floors, and adding on to it would have the same challenges that Tim mentioned with any other building. You probably have to basically start from scratch.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, if the opportunity was there, I think we should at least...
Well, one thing...
Not exact at this point.
One thing that has occurred to me is that when we are going to be able to do the seismic upgrade on City Hall, which will also include the existing parking structure that we have, which now, you know, is leaking and crumbly and et cetera, et cetera, that perhaps when that's redone, it would end up with some additional parking spaces more than it has right now. Is that a possibility, you think, down the line?
That is one of the concepts when we were looking at the Civic Center campus, was adding parking on top of that deck, yes.
Uh-huh, right, okay. So, that might be, that might be a source of, of space for parking. That doesn't cost us any additional money to buy land for it. Yes, you'd have to build it, but we wouldn't have to buy land for it, and it wouldn't force parking onto the sides of Peace Plaza either, but it would be, okay. So, just wanted to throw that out.
I think it's fair to say that looking at this site does kind of call in some of those same questions that were sort of brought up with the Civic Center development. It is, it, it, it's both its pro and its con in, in one respect.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Oh, any, anything further on this site? Okay, move along.
Okay, so we move on to Site Thirteen, known as the O'Brien site. Again, you know, the site analysis. Some of the big pros, we're in the central location. It's a little bit further from downtown. This is the furthest from the, the central core of the four sites.
Well, those two sites, those two, those two sites really are.
Two sites, yeah.
Thirteen and fifteen.
So, I think there's, the, the pros here, the community visibility has a lot of visibility. You know, coming, anytime you're headed north on Liberty, this is really asking for development on the site. It's, it's flat. So, in terms of site cost, this is going to be the lowest. But, with that is, there's, we don't have the parking to borrow from, in a way, if we just think about it that way. So, it has a lot of community visibility. It's also a very large site. This is the largest of the four. And then, there's some, some neighborhood compatibility, I think, is a pro. And our last one there is ease of acquisition.
Right, buildings of scale nearby and so forth.
The cons are it's on multiple parcels. And, and another con is the potential for environmental risk. It was a, a car dealership. We, we don't know. It's sort of an unknown. We're not saying there's anything there, but there, it does have higher risk. There could be gas tanks there. We don't know. And we're not speculating, but it's just, it has added risk compared to the other sites.
That site is on the market now. Have the, did you talk with the broker? Do they have any information about that?
No.
Yeah, but I mean, none of that is known?
Some of it would be known, but we always want to put that as an unknown, because you, some of these things have been around for years and years, and you just, you don't know.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Following up on that question, it's, I guess it's twofold. My, my first question is, and it relates kind of to property on the tax rolls, property off the tax rolls, without knowing how much taxes that are being paid now on that. Well, one way to look at that is there would be the potential for, say, some sort of lease, like a ninety-nine-year lease, where, in effect, we're paying the lease, but then, you know, the owner is still on the tax rolls and is paying us back. So, we're getting some benefit from that. I guess my first question would be for Jake, is have you had any, have you seen that done where, you know, the, the land is still owned and it's a long, long-term lease?
Yes.
Okay. So, that, that's, that's a possibility for funding, and it's also a possibility to keep this on the tax rolls.
Yeah, I actually worked on a fire station project that was leased from the Park District in that case, where they had like a ninety-nine-year lease on that property. It, it, it's, it's done. We've not studied the feasibility of that.
Sure, sure, sure. Thank you.
I'm looking across the room, Deputy City Manager Casey Duncan.
Sure, I was just bringing up the point that at this current stage in time, we have nothing in the general fund for a lease. And so, given our current fiscal situation and, and what we're looking at with the constraints, this would add another layer to that.
Oh, that's right. Counselor Lewis?
I think the, the value to the tax rolls we were talking about would be the land value only, not the improvements. The improvements would be non-taxable.
Right, because the use would be a nonprofit.
So, it would be just, just the land value.
Counselor Bednarz?
I, and the committee, actually had a chance to go to Terry Hancock's, Hancock Real Estate's website. It's six lots, and they're asking five-point-six million for the land. Readly accessible information to anybody, but anyway.
So, I just, I just wanted to point out, I think the biggest challenge with this site is, is, is access. So, in talking with the city, we have limited access off of Liberty and also out of, off of Commercial. Really, really, we can only have two, two ways total on and off the site, is what we're hearing. And the other challenge is actually getting south off this property. How, you know, that's one of the, it's sort of the flow of traffic. So, in terms of police vehicles heading south, it's a little bit challenging.
Or accessing the site from southbound Commercial Street.
Right, that's a better way to put it. So, that, that's a challenge to this one. And just the test fit, how could the building be situated? I think we're all aware of these diagrams, but now the section is moved over here. So, in order to make this function, we're, we're looking at one level at-grade parking and then one level above it. So, one level of structured parking across the entire kind of north part of the site can cover our parking needs. The, we're not able to really borrow parking for this, this site. I say borrow parking, to the level that we are at the other site.
We, we did look at the fact that the Marion Parkade is one block south.
Right.
And so, as we look at what I'd call the master plan parking need, that four-hundred-and-forty-five number, I think this site begs sort of a middle-ground approach where you deal with your parking need as you can in sort of a, what I'd call more of a sweet spot mode here. This is sort of a logical approach. We understand that this neighborhood doesn't have a, a available street parking, that that's an issue in this neighborhood. So, being sensitive to the neighborhood, building enough parking to do the right thing for yourself, you know, this scheme would leave about forty-five stalls of that master plan idea unmet. To us, a perfectly reasonable assumption would be that you could start to ask future staff to park in the Marion Parkade and walk one block to work. Now, you wouldn't do that with your patrol vehicles, but, you know, for civilian employees, you know, I park a block away from my office. This is not an unheard-of concept. So, you know, being sensitive to the neighborhood, building enough parking to have a legitimate approach at this site, but looking to the future to what we understand might be underutilized parking that's already in place would make sense.
I think Counselor Bennett has a question.
I am just curious, oh, sorry. I, I'm curious about the setback that you show there. You, you intrude on it with your parking. What, what is that setback? I mean, is that a, is that a legal...
We're actually, we're actually asked to make that setback closer. So...
Closer to what?
To, to Commercial. It needs to be about ten feet, I think, is the maximum you can be off of the, off...
He's talking about the...
Oh, the water, okay, I'm sorry. Sorry, I thought you meant about this side.
No, he's talking about the...
You're talking about this setback, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Right, right. What is that, all of that?
This is...
The creek.
Right, right. There is, there is an environmental zone running through this area. And so, you could see how it does affect part of where we're locating this. Now, we would, we would have to research really how much of a setback that truly is and what it means in terms of, of zoning.
So, Tim, we're understanding that, the requirements, we understand, is a fifty-foot setback from the top of the bank. So, this would be a fine-tuning, you know, if we pursue more detailed design on this site, that would be something you would track and get down to the, you know, details on.
Okay, so that's, that, that parking structure, then, is, is, is really drawn intruding into that fifty-foot setback.
It is currently. It may be possible to build parking within that setback and not a building.
We, we've been, and, and we've been conservative with these numbers on, on the ground here. And so, the parking that we would lose in this zone here could be picked up here.
Okay.
In terms of actual spaces.
And that's why we show parking up there and not building up there. The building is concentrated near the corner of Division.
Well, I, I just didn't understand exactly. I could see it look like it was along Mill Creek. I just couldn't figure out, is it a legal thing and, and...
That's a good question. We, we would just need to fine-tune this.
If so, are we, are we precluded from parking, or do we have other, what else have we got going on here that we could get ourselves caught up in?
But, is that setback to scale? In other words, is that fifty feet?
Right.
That is fifty feet.
I, I'm, I'm...
Sure it is, yeah.
Yeah. You know, the next level of this would be to get a, a true survey to find exactly where it's at.
Okay.
Which is possible. So, but, we're, we're confident that any parking that is here could be absorbed here, or even, we didn't, we didn't build out all the way to the north.
Right.
So, we could, whatever is displaced here, we're confident we could get on the side.
Pick it up.
We could skinny up the parking.
I think the other, just a comment is, as you talked about access and the way that whole street system works there, that's our street system. We can, I mean, will you be making, if you, if you were to look at this site, would you make recommendations to us about how to improve the whole shebang?
Right, re-signaling and...
Yeah, I apologize. I probably should have started with that. You know, we're suggesting that there would be revised intersection to allow access eastbound on Division.
Okay.
Via roundabout, which would significantly help traffic flow and also police access to serve the city.
My concern is that one of the cons that shows up is poor access from southbound is how, how, how real is that if we can work with the access? I mean, as long as we can work out a way to fix that.
I think it could potentially be signaled, which, which would, which would allow for...
Which might remove the con.
A, a left turn off of, and be, and be, right. And because there is... And because there is potential urban renewal, you know, dollars on the site, that, that could be something.
There's urban renewal going planning in this area. And this is not off the grid for us in terms of activity.
Can I make a comment relative to the southbound Commercial? I frequent the area and I mentioned it the day we were there. The two center lanes of Commercial southbound, there's a third one on the far side that heads onto Front Street. But that, the east, eastern lane doesn't line up with anything with the, with the bridge. And as a result, it actually is quite open quite often. The problem is north of Division, cars stack up in that lane, but everything south of that, it's a wide open lane every day. Like, went on that lane coming to this meeting tonight. I had a couple of, just a small comment. I may have misspoken. I said that the, the land that we know is the lawn or BMW, not BMW, but anyway, the land is six property, pieces of property. But I see here, you've taken the office building to the north and there is a vacant field there that you're not planning on taking?
Oh, further north?
No, no, right up to, yeah.
Oh, right up there.
That's a vacant field and there's an office building that you're, so there's more than just simply what's up for sale. Now, there are two pieces of property that are not, I think, as far as I know actively up for sale. And I just wanted to make sure that the council knew that there was more to this than just.
That's, that's correct.
One other point, if I could just add regarding Front Street and Commercial through this area, those are ODOT facilities. So any alterations we want to make there, we have to work with ODOT and that's possible, but they, they have different goals about how traffic moves, right?
How come that's not up?
I think it's important to note that if you're southbound on Commercial and you're a visitor, you're public trying to go to this facility, you are, you're going south and you're going around the block to come back north on Liberty and get there.
Right.
Or you pre-plan and figure out how to get southbound on Liberty to do that. So if you're southbound on Commercial, I think that's one of the things we're saying is that with all that street frontage, in some circumstances, depending on which way you're going, it's tough to get there.
All right. I think it's pretty simple, the way that it stacks up.
The real, the, the real great opportunity here is that you have an, you have a parking deck that is directly connected with your building in a, in a way that allows officers to come in and out in a very fluid way. I think that's one of the very strong things about this site, as well as the fact that you have this long front along Commercial Street and an opportunity to sort of align your building with that. I think this, the, the, the concept on, on this site has a terrific amount of civic presence, probably to the greatest degree that any of the sites do. So that, that runs in contrast with some of those other, you know, some of those other things. But I think it stacks up similarly to, to some of the other sites.
Counselor Bennett?
Just one sort of separate question. Chief, what do you think of this site?
I think it's a great site, other than access. And I was trying to think how you'd do that. I think you'd have to do a lot of signage, you'd have to direct people to the, to the site. But if it had better access, I think it'd be, I think it'd be a great site.
Okay, thank you. Good question. Okay.
Just a, what about an intersection or driveway? I don't know what the street is. It's up, it's in front of the food warehouse thing that's up there and putting in a signal there so you could do cross-traffic. It would allow you to get on to Commercial Street, allow you to get down to Front Street. And it's at the end of the lot. I'm just throwing that out as an idea.
I, I feel the same way about that. It looks to me like this, whatever the street is, is going east and west. Coming off Front Street is between Commercial and Front. You're coming down Commercial, if there's a light there, that gives you a whole lot of different ways to get out, including.
Can you point where you're talking about? I can't figure out where. Oh, good.
Oh, yeah, you're tall enough.
Yeah, he's tall enough. Oh, right. That's the street that goes, right, it goes right to the grocery, right.
Go south, you could take the, the, the light going west and then turn left on Front Street and come out at the same place.
Yeah, but there isn't a light there now. Oh, okay, sorry. Oh, okay, okay.
We'd have to acquire that next property north, just, it's possible, yeah, we'd have to acquire this as well.
Oh, I see, okay.
In order to do that. Because we, we basically end on the south side of that.
I see.
But it's possible, we'd have to just get more property.
Right, and that, that is a heavily traveled street. Commercial is just backed up. I, I'm sorry, I had to be out of the room, but you probably talked about that, when you talked about traffic.
Mm-hmm, it is.
Yeah, okay. Right.
Any more?
I think we're good. We're ready for the next.
Back to the beginning.
Yeah, here we are.
We need 15, don't we? Where is 15?
15's probably one of the areas.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay.
Lots of colors in life.
Lots of colors, lots, basically it's areas where we, we, it's a challenge to put a building. And it's, it's actually larger than this, once we take into account the floodplain. So thinking about FEMA guidelines or regulations, those do change over time. And so, you know, we would advise not putting a police station in a floodplain. You can't, I mean, there's, just.
You wouldn't put the station, but you could put parking.
Correct, and so that's exactly what we did. And funny enough, that's, that's kind of what this existing building did as well. But you, just to walk through this real quick, the topography slopes from high to low, obviously, because this is the floodplain. The access is a little bit more challenging. We have Liberty coming around and joining Broadway as well as Alarma, right? Is, or via the alley. It feels like an alley as you come down this way, but it is an access point. But it, it's a bit challenging in terms of the access.
Does that, Alarma will clear up to Belmont?
It does. There's intersection, right.
And there was a little houses on the right-hand side.
That's right, that's right.
But it's not right away, we have to get, and it does give us access to Belmont, which gives access to Liberty.
Yes, yeah. The, you know, the other pros is there's some urban renewal, there's neighborhood compatibility, and it's, it is a larger site. There's, the cons are kind of community visibility potentially. And also the majority of the site is in a floodplain, which we, we've included that site map, thanks to Alan. As you can see, this is sort of our site in here. Anything red is, you know, not allowed in a way. So you could think about our, what's left to put the building. It is.
Yeah, right, yeah, you can actually see the existing buildings, which are, you know, right, right along here. And then really, everything, everything back here is all in that flood, floodplain.
Storage facilities. We actually had to pull some stuff out of one of them for this thing.
So back to the, the comment, I forget what Commissioner suggested that, but, so that's, we basically put the parking in the, in the floodplain and put the building out of the floodplain. So what that means is, is a significant amount of parking behind the building, which is kind of a plus. But the, the reality is, it is in a floodplain. So you would have police vehicles in a floodplain. So if there was an event, you'd have to move all the vehicles. So that's not without its challenges. It's possible, but it's, it's a big con, in our opinion. We're kind of sectioning, the section here is down low. As we move up the building, up, up the site vertically, we've placed the building out of the floodplain, along Broadway, and it's pretty much a straightforward four-story building due to the density required. Behind it would be a, one level of structured parking, so you could get all of your parking, basically occur here. And then this zone here would be out front, that would be parking on grade, no, no parking above that. Because, because the site slopes down as you move to the west. It's pretty straightforward as it stacks up. Second and fourth levels are basically identical. So it is possible, but the parking's in the floodplain.
With, with some significant structured parking on the site as well, it, it doesn't function as directly as some of the other sites in terms of how the parking relates to the building. It's, the site is a little bit irregularly shaped.
And I, I guess I didn't explain the access. Because you basically, you have a building here, your, your access on and off the site is really from Alarma and Liberty in this location.
Right, it doesn't give you the ability to exit directly out onto, onto Broadway.
To Broadway, because it's the only place you can put a building.
The other important component about the floodplain is it's a process risk. As we understand it, as we dive deeper into the fact that there is a floodplain here, it's not that you can't build on it. I think if you were shovel-ready today, you could push through the coordination on that. As we understand it, there's significant risk that the criteria and requirements are, are in the process of changing. And there is a strong possibility that by the time you're shovel-ready, you could just run up against that end and the answer would be no. You cannot build on the floodplain, even parking. So with that risk potential and process, I would just have to recommend that, that's a tremendous, you know, that's a pretty small basket to put all your eggs in, only to get down the way and not be able to do it.
One of the considerations that Diana, that Counselor Diana Dickey raised with this when we did the site study, when the site visit, was that we've worked very hard in this neighborhood. North, North Broadway developed the Broadway Commons, the other businesses that are around there, the, the townhouses that have been built, the apartments, the mixed-use, the restaurants and the movie theater. And then suddenly here's this big government building. And I share her concern about that as a, how, as, because I think that was one of the things we talked about also was how will this facility relate to its neighborhood? Whether its neighborhood is commercial, industrial, residential? This is really residential with what I'd call kind of light commercial, small shops, small restaurants.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I, I agree with that and I would say it even more strongly because we've got that great development up north, Broadway Commons, the theater, all, that's, that's really hopping now. And we've got the town, downtown, which is south of that. And it seems to me, over the time, those are going to merge up together and the market's going to take care of that. And it's something that, that will have private developers very interested in. And I look at those big warehouses and think they could be lofts and all sorts of other excellent uses of that that we don't need to push like we might need to push someplace else.
That's a good point, too, absolutely. Okay, all right. So I'm thinking that we're down to actually point, here we are, six. We've looked at the, the, or five. We've reviewed the designs. So I believe that we're at a point for discussion on the size, the preferred site or sites, and then we'll talk about next steps.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for all the work that you've done on this. This actually exceeded my wildest dreams as far as what you could bring back to us in really such a short time that you've had to, to work on all of these. So thank you. I think this was very, very helpful. Are there any last questions from counselors before we start talking about this part? Okay, Counselor Bennett?
Just, just one, I, I, talking with a couple of folks that left a little early. One of the questions was, which ones, which one costs the most? If you were to build on this site, which one? It was sort of the, the bottom line question. I don't know if, if site has enough of an impact for you to make a statement on, this site would be the one that would be the least expensive if you were to build on it.
You know, one, one thing, just to provide some background of this, I don't think that the building and its consequent parking varies that much from site to site. Obviously, if you can, as with the case with Site Two, if you could offset some of the parking with existing parking, obviously that, that takes a chunk out of it. Site One is probably, I think Tim made the comment at the time going through, it probably is the most expensive because of having to bridge over that riparian area to, you know, stay away from that. You know, I think there's some trade-off in terms of the, you know, I think we mentioned in, in the, going through the sites, Site Two, we're, it's south of the library here, has the disadvantage of, of a good deal of grade that we need to deal with. But that offsets the fact that, you know, on the O'Brien site, which is flat, flatter, you have to, you know, facilitate more parking and, you know, in its place. So I'd say that those sites sort of come out probably fairly similarly. We are in the process of, of having a cost estimator put together, more detailed costs on, on these sites. And we'll know more when that's, when that's complete. But, you know, that being said.
I think that's, I think it's well said. Basically, the, because you have the ability to build, to build less parking on Site Two, that sort of offsets the, the site costs because you have topography now.
Well, not just topography, but multiple ownerships and developed out.
Correct.
I mean, you're pretty.
But when you balance that with Bill O'Brien, where you have to build more structured parking, which is not cheap, but it is on a flat site, we feel right now that it's pretty much, they're fairly equal.
Okay, those are the two sites really that you were going to show us in the first place. Yeah.
That we felt rose to the top. I don't, I don't know if there's agreement on the part of the council after seeing these, these four sites.
I, I think you ruled out the, the one site, the flooding site, but anyway, go ahead. Sorry, McCoy, you had your hand over.
Counselor McCoy?
I'd like for the move that we direct staff to proceed with planning 150,000 square foot police facility to be located on either the Leslie or O'Brien sites. And direct staff to set a February 2016 public hearing to consider the program and site to allow time for refined cost estimates and designs to be prepared.
Date in February was?
I just, February.
February, is there? Yes.
I came to this meeting knowing that we cannot make a decision in this, in this room.
No, we're not making a decision on, we can vote, we can vote on, on discussion items here, to recommending, because we've got to be moving forward and we've always agreed that we would be continuing the process moving forward. And so that's just what we're, the goal this evening was to try to identify a couple of sites to pare down so that the consultants could continue to do what we need, and that is the more specific site analysis and, and cost analysis to come back to us. We have a couple of decisions to make, affirmations to, so that they can go forward with that work. But correct me if I'm wrong, staff, we, we can tonight make a recommendation on a couple of sites then that the consultants can keep moving forward on the work.
Yes, I think the, and, and the city attorney is here, the, the, the discussion you're having really has to do with council rules and those are your rules, so you can, you can choose to.
And we have a council meeting Monday night. It's not like we, you know, would have to rush.
And that would be another option, is tonight you could make a recommendation to yourself on Monday and ratify that.
As council may recall, you modified your rules in December, I believe, regarding work sessions specifically where you specifically allowed yourself to make decisions at work sessions other than on substantive matters. This, if this is just a matter to direct staff to prepare information, which essentially is what it is, I, I think it's probably allowed here. You can, you could say it's not, you could have it, it's up to council to interpret your own rules. There's more than one way to look at this, but within your realm of authority to do it.
Okay, all right. Counselor Lewis?
No, I, I guess I'm going to question, I would prefer to have the next step be to have the cost estimates on the two sites come back and, and continue the work session to fill in what I consider to be more important blanks before we go to a public hearing.
Oh, I think we would be doing that, Counselor Lewis, that, I thought that was a plan.
I thought the next step, that the motion was, was to go to a public hearing.
No, the, the, well, eventually, yes, we'll go to a public hearing. But with that information. Right. It didn't mean, it didn't mean they come at the same time. Counselor Anderson?
This side of the room would like to hear the motion again.
Yeah, well, all right. Here we are.
I move to direct staff to proceed with the plant, with planning 150,000 square foot police facility to be located on either the Leslie or O'Brien sites and direct staff to set a February 2- and direct staff to set a February 2016 public hearing to consider the program and site to allow time for refined cost estimates and designs to be prepared. So, the cost estimates are going to be there as part of that hearing, and we're going to get those ahead of time, so.
If I may.
Yes.
Perhaps provide some, some additional detail. As, as was said earlier by the, by the consulting team, and I agree with Alan, they've, they've done a fantastic job pulling together information. However, they can't work miracles, so they do need some additional time to prepare those cost estimates and some additional design. So what would really be helpful for, for them, as well as for staff, would be if, if council can say, you can drop the, the warehouse site, you can drop the windows on the west side. And, and focus on those two. And we would have, they would have those, those cost estimates for us by February 11th. So they, they would have it by February 11th. Depending upon when you would request the public hearing, it would be, you know, pretty tight for your first February meeting. If you wanted to hold a special meeting for the purpose of the public hearing, we could maybe have that before your second February meeting. If not, if you wanted to stay with your regular schedule, we would have the public hearing on, at your February 22nd regular meeting.
Right, and I think that was the date that we actually had on documents earlier, that that's when we would have the public hearing. I think one thing that might also be very helpful would be for, for us, council, to accept the recommendation of the subcommittee in terms of the size of the, of the police facility. This is what we've been calling the size of the program. That is something that we have not, as a group, said, yes, that's, that's the right size. It's in the motion, but I want, I want to be sure that we have some discussion, that we vet that, that if there are questions, and I, so that we have that, that decision. Because otherwise, they, it's really not fair to say to the consultants, do all that work, and then we come back and then suddenly, you know, two or three or four people might say, not, not that big or different. I, I don't want to get down that road, yes.
Well, they've got to have some size to at least develop the cost estimates for. Now whether the council then says, well, wait a minute, that's too much money, now we're going to go down, do the next exercise, which would be cutting that down to what we think's passable, for lack of a better word.
Right.
Price tag.
Price it just based on the 1.8 additional officers per annum?
No, it's 2.4. That's what the price.
Yes, but not, that's not reality.
I, I think it is reality, that's what the, the, that's where you got the square feet was 2.4 officers per year, not 1.8 officer per square, per year.
The 2.4 officers per year is, is a division out of it. It's not, it wasn't, it wasn't based on that, but I, I mean, I think there could be, there could be a reduction based on, in terms of staff numbers for reducing that ratio.
Which would reduce the size to some extent, so.
To, to, to a small extent, yes.
Councilor Ben Arz, and then Councilor Lewis, okay.
Because of the statement that I read earlier this evening, I'm going to recuse myself from this issue and from the discussion of the matter. The questions I asked were about process, not about the issue, and I'm going to abstain from voting.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Lewis.
I'm satisfied with the direction, I'm back to my question. Once the information is collected, I'd like the opportunity to have the council meet in a work session to talk about it. The cost information is still too important to me. It's too important to the decision-making process to, to not talk about it before going to a public hearing. It's too important for my decision-making process, so I want to get the information and then have a work session, if that's the word, and then see where we are after that.
Councilor Bennett.
Yeah, I, I appreciate what Councilor Lewis is saying, and certainly we can, you know, you can do this, you can come at it almost any way you want. For me, it would be really helpful to have a public hearing, to hear from the public about their reaction to what is the recommended program. And one of the things that, and, and I ran into this the other night at one of my neighborhood group meetings, and it was the, don't mess with this to the point that we end up with Courthouse Square in terms of goofing around with cutting it, making it smaller, making it weaker, making the mess that was done with Courthouse Square by trying to be the architects, the, the money guys, the, you know, we'll make this room smaller, this room bigger, we'll, we'll get it into the kind of mess that they had there, plus certainly construction problems, which I wouldn't expect. But I would really like to have that public hearing. I don't know, I know where a few people are on price, but I don't know where the general public is on price and kind of what they'd like to have us looking at in terms of the scope of the project. We can always pare it down. Once we've had the public hearing, we at least have some basis for talking about, you know, good testimony on why we would look at slower growth in police would be helpful. Good testimony on, you know what, we don't need a community room. Good testimony on, well, you know, we'll leave the 911 center where it is, that kind of stuff. That's what I expect the public to come in and talk to us about. I'd like to, I want to get, I want to hear from the public here pretty soon. So, that's my.
All right, and I, I don't disagree with that, and we, I've always said we'll have a public hearing, and I definitely would support having a public hearing and insist we have a public hearing. One of the things that I think is very, very, very important is that we affirm that we are going to build a facility that will meet the needs of our law enforcement department of our government for the next 30 years. We're in a situation right now, looking for a facility with a department that came into this building in 1972, and in 1980 commissioned a study to look for space because they were out of space. We've been grappling with this since 1980. I want to be certain that we don't try to measure this building down to what someone thinks that it could be built for, or that somebody would like to pay for. I think we need to be absolutely certain that we step up to the plate and that we show the leadership that actually provides the facility that this community is going to need now 30 years down the road, and do a better job than they did in 1972 that put us in a situation that, and by 1980, we were out of the building. And so I'm hoping that we don't start letting dollars go through our brains and start clouding our judgment about what is our job. Our job is to see to the facilities and the programs that this community needs. And when we have the kind of rising crime rate in certain areas, and we have the certain areas of, of law enforcement that are needed, I shudder to think when someone says, well, maybe we could really just plan on smaller growth so we'll hire fewer police officers. Boy, I think that's a road to having, creating a quality of life in this community that would not make me want to live here. Councilor McCoy.
At some point in this whole process, somebody asked me my opinion on following some of the proposals from the Blue Ribbon Task Force, which were hire an architect, help them find, you know, have them lead us to find the right sites, have them tell us what we need in the design, hire experts to do this for. Well, we've done that, and my, one of the things I followed in my career, no matter any consultant I hired, I told them, you're the expert, I'm not. I'm not going to tell you how to do your job. You come to me with your proposal and we'll vet it. And I think this is the same, for me, this is the same thing. We hired the experts, we got the right people here, they've done a great job as far as I'm concerned. They're telling us this is what we need. So I think the discussion should start with, the expert we hired have led us to these couple of sites, they've told us what we need in the building. Now, political realities and things I've referenced before are still in play. We can still talk about this, but the discussion starts at this size. We hear from the public, and I agree with Councilor Bennett, we need to hear from the public. We've got to have them weigh in on the decision. At that point, our discussion and deliberation start on, are we staying here? Are we going to, we're going to have to look at cuts, are we going to have to do what's politically feasible? I think all that can happen with the, with the, you know, moving forward, getting the information from them, having the public hearing, and then deliberating from there on what our final decision is.
Councilor Bennett, and then Councilor Nanki.
I think McCoy just got it absolutely right, he's right on the money, so. Just vote with McCoy here.
Councilor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yeah, and price still has a factor in whether or not the public will buy it, which means we will get a facility or we will get no facility ever, so it, just one of those things to throw in there. The other side of that is we're an hour past when we said we were going to be done. I finished a three-day audit today, I'm on like zero sleep for the last three weeks, and it's three days until Monday. To maybe pick the rest of that discussion up and the motion even, on Monday night. Because right now, with the hard, looking at it from right now, I'll vote no against any motion. Because I essentially don't have enough brain cells left to really process and, and, and look at it from all sides. It's like, how much are we locking down on square footage now? How much does it cost a consultant to take that price and then maneuver it versus we give them kind of what we really are thinking of for square footage? I, I don't know what the excess cost is from that either. But I, I'm sure they could say, how much does it take to do it once or twice? No, the motion hasn't been seconded, so.
All right, I'll call for the vote. Yes, Councilor Anderson.
I'm ready to make an amended motion. Part of this is, is, is what Councilor Nanki said, but I would like to see them also come back with cost estimates for the facility less the communication center, less the crime lab, and let, and with figuring what has been the historical trend of 1.8 officers per year as opposed to 2.4 officers per year. So my amended motion is that they consider not only the 150,000 square feet, but also whatever feet that would be, less the communication center, less the crime lab, and working on the increase of 1.8 officers per year.
Councilor Bennett? Okay, I think there's a comment here from the chief.
Well, it hasn't been seconded yet, so, yeah.
We don't have a second yet, but I think the chief would like to say something, or.
Second for a discussion.
All right, Chief Moore.
With all due respect to the motion, if, if I would, could make a suggestion, I would not take the crime lab out.
I'm happy to say that, the crime lab plan, I've, the communication center and the 1.8 per year. I would amend my amendment to the motion.
Okay, all right, Councilor Bennett.
You may well have the right answer at the end. I, I don't think this is the end, okay? That's my concern right now, and this may be the kind of thing. What I saw, provided to us, allowed us to pull exactly what you want, and we would be able to do it, pull them out as pieces, after seeing what the full meal deal looks like, the recommended, as, as Councilor McCoy said, kind of the recommendation. And I don't think it in any way precludes what you're proposing.
Well, no, I don't either.
I'm not sure this is a necessary amendment.
I don't either, but I would like to see what, it, to me, and I guess I would direct this to the consultants, how much more of an effort would be to provide us with those types of figures in addition to the, the full meal deal? I mean, maybe you could do it in an hour's worth of time.
My impression was you could sort of do it with existing.
Well, I did it myself, but I, you know, I'm not the expert here, and I'd like to see what the figures would be with that.
Those two items are not terribly problematic. We can work with our cost estimator to parse out the, the communication center, just check with Jake. He can, he can, he can get to the bottom of the square footage. So I would say, these may not be at a fine level of granularity, but in the context of an overall cost estimate, can we give you a component?
Yes, yes.
Just say, we believe that component is approximately X amount of the total.
And I think that also then gives the public something to look at when they're giving the hearings. Here's the big thing, here's, here's a different step.
Yeah, I think one of the things that's important, though, with regard to the communication center is that the communication center has got to go somewhere, and when it does, it's got to be built, too. Again, that specific standard, just like the police facility that we're looking at. And so we're going to need to know, because I understand we're in lease space there, that lease is going to come up. We're going to have to move them somewhere at some point. So we've got to know what that figure is, too, because that cost for their space does not go away. So I, I would ask, could I make an addition to your amendment?
Let's hear it.
Well, just that they tell us what that cost would be for the commu- communication center built somewhere else. I mean, we've got to be, we've got to focus on reality here. It's going to go somewhere, it's not going to just disappear because we say, don't put it in this building.
Well, perhaps the staff could tell us how long the lease runs, but the other thing that, that.
I think it's a year longer or something.
All that I understand from the communication center is we've got a lot of other agencies that are already there, and the state plan is to go from 56 to nine, and we're going to be one of those nine. So there's going to be other sources of income, I would presume, to, to pay for the communic- communication center, not in our police station.
Or probably in our lifetime, when we see the state get that.
Right. Chief, can you please talk about?
We're in year 11 of a 10-year lease, and we have two, three-year extensions, if you will.
Okay.
So we, we do have a little bit of time. And the counselor is correct, it is a regional facility, so different agencies pay into it, but they pay into it for the cost of staffing, equipment. I don't believe they have ever been asked to build a facility.
I see.
And in the case, if it was a 190, if we change the structure or the governance of it, that, that would be something we have to look at in the future.
But, so I, I still am requesting that, that they give us some dollar figure for what it would cost to have.
I believe that would be absolutely necessary.
I think so, too.
And could that be done by the consultants, or is that a?
So you're talking about a separate cost for a standalone.
That's what the mayor's talking.
Well, they'll have to go somewhere.
Right, understood.
So there will be a facility that has to be built, and when they go, they've got to be in a facility built to these orders. We just can't put them in the, in the old Safeway store out on Commercial, right? We can't put them there, okay, all right.
If I could, Mayor, so that exercise would be a little different scope than what, what we've talked about with our consultant team up till now.
Uh huh.
I think we could provide a number, but it would not be to the, near the same level of detail as the work they've done to date. It would have to be a pretty, like, guess for square foot for a building cost, and guess for a property cost, and we would state those assumptions, but we couldn't get to the level of detail that we've gone to here.
No, but would that be the type of facility that would be built to the earthquake standards, et cetera, et cetera?
We would factor that in, but I just want to make sure it's clear that unless we, unless we do a lot more work and authorize additional scope, would it have to be a pretty high-level estimate?
Also, just, Jake and I were just chatting, just intuitively, we would find it very hard to believe that you could build it standalone, less expensively than as a part of this overall project.
Well, that's kind of what I'd like to find out.
I, we're, we're just sitting here at the table saying, we'd be really surprised.
Without spending money on an additional study, and I mean, we'd, we'd love to, to do additional work, but at, at, at that point, I think we can say fairly confidently, without lifting a pencil, that it's going to be comparable or worse to, to build a.
Well, I, I don't disagree with that, but I guess my point is, if we've got two, three-year lease options, that's six years down the road, that's another potential bond. I mean, my concern, our job here is to, is to, is to present something to the public.
Oh, it's not another bond.
Well, it's, it's, it's not in this.
We have, we're going to have, we're going to have streets and bridges again, we're going to have fire.
I don't mean it's the next. I don't mean it's the next bond, I mean it will be an additional bond.
I'm talking about, we're talking about bond after bond after bond.
I understand that, I understand that.
That's in line already.
But we want to pass this one, you know, and that's, to me, is the, is the real, that's our job here, is to pass this, so I'd like to see what, what the cost figures would be without the, the communication center, and then we'll take it from there.
Well, and I think a very, very important part of our job, in terms of passing a bond measure first, is going out and, and explaining and educating the community about just what this facility needs to be, and why it needs to be that way, and tell the story so that they can come to, you know, a decision, but based on, on their truly being educated about it, rather than thinking maybe it could be this way or that way. I feel like we still don't have really great information out to the community about this, about the facility and what it, what it takes to build this.
I am happy to accept the mayor's friendly amendment to my amendment, that we get a ballpark estimate of what a standalone cost would be.
Okay, that's good. All right.
I called a question on the amendment.
Call a question on the amendment, all those in favor of the motion as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries with one no vote by Counselor Nanki. All right, are we...
I'm abstaining.
And you're abstaining, so that's, all right, one, two, three, four, that's five, five of us, all right, five yea votes, okay. Is there anything, do we still have, we're done, technically, this takes care of that?
Do a, do a final vote on the whole package.
All right, so now, so now for a final vote on the motion that was originally amended, which is, can someone restate that for us?
Aye.
For clarity.
I can.
Okay.
It is, is Counselor McCoy's motion, which to ask the staff to come back with studies on 150,000 square foot police facility on site number two, the Leslie Street site, and site number 13, the O'Brien site, as well as come back with figures for building on the same site, less the communication center, and, and less, and at 1.8 officers per year, with a ballpark estimate of what it would cost to build a standalone center.
There you go.
All right, thank you, well done.
And a public hearing in February.
Yeah, a public hearing in February, thank you.
Absolutely.
I should be the city recorder, I mean, I said that all in one breath.
Oh, you ought to, you know what, you ought to be a lawyer, Tom.
Two more numbers in that.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion as stated by our colleague, and lawyer, friend. All right, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, motion carries with one, with one obsession, one abstention, I'm sorry, right? And one no vote.
Get myself in trouble, I voted for him.
I want to say thank you to everyone, thank you to our experts who have worked hard, thank you to the staff, I really appreciate all the work you've been doing. Chief, I really appreciate the fact that you are hanging in with us and here with us, and I know you have other long hours of work that you've been doing, so thank you very much. Thank you, counselors. All right, see you all Monday night.